Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, folks at home, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, November the 5th, 2019. I'll start with introductions. I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Gary Edwards. To my right is Commissioner Ty Mensah. To his right is La Bonita Boomer, the Board Clerk, Clerk of the Board. And on the bench over here, to her right, is County Manager Romero Chavez. And to his right is the Assistant County Manager and Finance Director, Robin Campbell. So with that, I'm going to turn to Vice Chair Commissioner Edwards for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Commander Amy Buckley will present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Amy, and thank you to your group.
Thank you. And welcome to your Purple Heart County.
There you go.
Is there an approval for Tuesday's agenda?
I make a motion to so approve.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve today, November 5th, 2019's agenda. Any amendments or changes?
No, sir.
No.
Nope. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Thank you. And approval for the Board meeting minutes?
Of October, I would make a motion to approve the Board meeting minutes of October 22nd, 2019, and October 29th, 2019.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve both sets of meeting minutes. Were there any changes?
No, sir.
Amendments at all?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you. Now we begin with presentations, and the first one's a proclamation for Ira Elcater, VFW Post 318 and Auxiliary Centennial Day. And I'm going to invite Commander Amy Buckley up. Please.
Good afternoon. My name is Commander Amy Buckley. I'm proud to say I'm the Commander of Post 318 in Olympia. It is truly my honor to be here today. I'm pretty giddy about this moment. First and foremost, thank you. Thank you very much for having VFW 318 here today and represented, and to take time out of your busy schedule. I would like to thank the Honor Guard. VFW Post 318 Honor Guard is led by Ken Wojinski. He is the Commander of the Honor Guard. And we also have Bob Sova. He was Volunteer of the Year for VFW 318. We also have Jim Ryan, Albert Lynch, and William Kinney is who we have also. We also have not in uniform today. We also have John Callett. He's sitting right here. He is part of the Honor Guard, as well as myself. And we also have a few more members back at the post right now. I'd like to make a couple comments real quick before we follow through with the proclamation. I can't even imagine, I couldn't even imagine that I was going to be elected as the first female Post Commander in 99 years. I say that not to toot my own horn, but as a culture change, I was on the USS Enterprise during 9/11. That's how I qualified to be in the VFW. So, you know, to have my brothers, I call them my brothers because we have built a family down there. For them to choose me as to be the first female commander is truly an honor, but also a big challenge. I did not want to let anybody down, but with my brothers leading me, I say we had a very successful year for the 99th year. When I went to my first meeting for districts, they said to me, "Okay, what is your goals?" I proudly stood up and I said, "My name is Amy Buckley. I'm the Post Commander. We will make Allstate and we will make All-American." I was told by the past State Commander, "Thank you for stating that, but you know, that's an awfully big task." I said, "Yes, ma'am, it sure is, but I'm taking that on." Proud to say that I was the 15th Commander, Post Commander, to bring home with our team, because it is a team effort, 15th for Allstate, 15th Commander for Allstate. But truly, what has been amazing to me is that we all came together to make All-American for the very first time in 99 years. I was allowed to go down to Orlando in July to pick up the All-American banner and walk across the stage. We were one of 7% of the VFWs across the world that earned All-American. There's more than 6,000 posts across the world. So truly, a small number only made it. So there is definitely a big checklist to make All-American, as well as Allstate. My goal is like a Super Bowl trophy. It's beautiful to look at, like the Seahawks, but I'm ready to come back. And now we're into the 100th year, okay? That year is gone, thank you, but now we're into the 100th, okay? So my time will end as Post Commander in June, and hopefully in Reno, July 18th. I'll be walking across that stage again, representing VFW Post 318, and bringing home another All-American streamer. That brings me to my final point today. We are very proud and happy and ecstatic, and I've been planning this with my team for over a year and a half. We have our 100th birthday on Friday, this Friday, and the doors open at 3 o'clock. We will have parking attendants, and I personally invite all of you to come down there. Yes, we have about 275 people, but believe me, I could fit a few more, okay? So if you'd like to attend, please see me afterwards and let me know. We will be having, the program starts at 4 o'clock or 1600, and then I'm not going to tell you what it's about, but it's going to be not boring, because I can't handle boring, okay? So it'll be about 30, 40-minute program. No guest speaker. It will be a lot of unveiling and putting that All-American streamer on our VFW flag, okay? Then after that, we will pop the corks on the champagne. We will cut the cakes. We have three members coming to cut the cakes, one of them being Ira Elcater, whom the Post is named after. You'll hear more of his story, our founder, at the 100th. I'm not going to say anything more, but it will really choke you up. Jennifer Ira's story and did a marvelous job in writing the story. And then we will cut the cakes with one of Ira's family. Our oldest member, literally, he's 100 years old, turned 100 on the Navy's birthday, October 13th. And also, we have another member of the Honor Guard, well, for the longstanding membership within the VFW. After that, please enjoy complimentary appetizers from Buffalo Wild Wings, Outback, Pellegrino's, Hop and Jack, or Hop Jacks now, it's Hop and Drops, okay? Red Lobster, Well-8 Brewery. I hope I'm not missing anybody, because I really appreciate their donation and complimentary appetizers. After that, we'll do raffles throughout the night and some free drawings. We'll also have membership cards available, so if anybody would like to find out more about how they can join the VFW or the VFW Auxiliary, definitely like to have you sign up. We'll have plenty of people there to walk you through what needs to be done for that. You can purchase merchandise down there. So we got special merchandise. And then we will dance tonight away, because I know a lot of you like to dance. We have two bands going on that night. We will have Backlash, which is a local band. It's a rock and roll kind of pop band. Then we also have Jones &amp; Fisher. They're a country duo. They're out of Seattle. They've traveled professionally, and they were ranked number one on King 5, okay? They'll be in the hall. Backlash will be in the canteen. Both bars will be available from 3 to 4. Then they'll close down at 4 o'clock, and we'll have our ceremony, and then they'll open back up afterwards. So that's what we're going to do for the 100th. Bremerton is also celebrating their 100th, so I'd like to shout out to VFW in Bremerton, and also to Aberdeen. Aberdeen just celebrated their 100th as well. Now, I won't take up any more of your time during this wonderful council meeting. Do appreciate it. What I would like to do, if you can all please rise behind the bench, both, all of you. Thank you. VFW 318 would like to present you with these challenge coins, with each one of them, and it's truly my honor to be down here. I get all choked up at this stuff, but if there's anything I can do for Thurston County, the city of Olympia, please let me know. It has been a good home to me for a few years, and I've chosen to reside here instead of my hometown in Nebraska, western Nebraska. So if there's anything I can do, I'd love to host you down there and take care of business. God bless you all. Thank you very much for coming, and I look forward to seeing you on Friday, November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
No, thank you, ma'am. Thank you very kindly. Thank you. Here, take these two.
Thank you.
Don't leave yet, because there's going to be a couple comments and such. Oh, that is beautiful. It's beautiful. Do you have any comments or questions? Okay. Comments before you read that?
Nope. I'm tickled to death that we're doing this. As a veteran and a member of the VFW, I'm really honored to be able to read this proclamation when you give me the goal.
I want to say thank you very much. It is a tremendous honor to have you and the Color Guard here as well for this, and not only for Ira Elcater, the commemoration, but also you being the first female commander is quite telling. I'd say a change in culture. And my son is a member of the VFW as well. And we take this seriously. That's why this is, Thurston County is a Purple Heart, Purple Heart County. So I thank you very much for that, and now we have a proclamation.
And stick around, Amy, because we're going to present this.
Yes, sir.
Yep, and there'll be photos.
Ira Elcater, VFW Post 318 and Auxiliary Centennial Day. Whereas Ira Elcater, VFW Post 318 and Auxiliary, was founded in Olympia, Washington, on November 8th, 1919, and named in honor of Ira Elcater, a Thurston County resident who died of wounds received in action during World War I in France. And whereas, over the past 100 years, Ira Elcater, VFW Post 318 and Auxiliary, have assisted veterans in need with a relief fund, a food locker, participation in the Thurston County Veterans Court, Christmas baskets, assistance with VA claims, and visits to veterans in hospitals and nursing homes. And whereas Ira Elcater, VFW Post 318 and Auxiliary, serves the Thurston County community by posting colors at local schools, and on Memorial Day and Veterans Day, provides an Honor Guard for veterans' memorials, and presents quilts of valor for those who have served honorably. And whereas Ira Elcater, VFW Post 318 and Auxiliary, provides donations to the USO, Fisher House, the National Children's Home, Relay for Life, and awards youth scholarships through Voice of Democracy and Patriots' Pin essay contests. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Thurston County Commissioners hereby proclaims the day of November 8th, 2019, as a special time to show appreciation for our veterans of foreign wars, and proclaim Ira Elcater, VFW Post 318 and Auxiliary, Centennial Day, adopted this 5th day of November 2019, your Board of County Commissioners.
Would you also, Amy, repeat for the folks at home and then folks here, the date of this celebration?
Yes. The celebration will be this Friday, as in three days and a wake-up, as we used to say in the Navy. And it will be at 3:00 PM, or if you'd like, 1500. The doors will open. We have approximately 275 confirmed, so we can still hold a few more. And then the program starts promptly at 4:00 PM or 1600. It will be approximately a 30 to 40-minute program. Again, I hope that you all attend. If you can attend any part of this celebration, that's the time, 1600. Let's do it for all those VFW members that have been part of this wonderful VFW for 100 years, and especially for whom it's named after. Ira Elcater. Thank you again.
And this is at the Post 318, 2902 East Martin Way.
Yes, VFW Post 318 is located at 2902 Martin Way East. Now, if you don't know where that is, if you remember the old bowling alley on Martin Way, it's directly across the street from that or just down from the hospital emergency exit.
98506. Okay. Please, come on up. Come on up. There you are, ma'am.
Get a picture first.
You take it. There you go. Thank you. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And then are we going to retire the colors at the end of the meeting then? They're not taking it right now?
At the end of the meeting.
Perfect. Here we go. Next is the Proclamation for Honor and Empower, the Centennial Anniversary of Zonta International Day.
Thank you, Commissioners. I would like to invite to the podium Lacey Councilmember Linda Zeeman, Ms. Penn Didloff, Ms. Shelley Willis, Ms. Judy Norton, and Ms. Paige Porter. They would like to address the board related to this proclamation.
Welcome. So, please.
Commissioners, guests, and staff, the members of Zonta International and the Zonta Club of Olympia would like to thank you for the proclamation honoring the Centennial Anniversary of Zonta International. As a club, we celebrated our 91st year in October of this year. Our members have worked to help women and children in Tomwater, Olympia, Lacey, and throughout Thurston County, to provide scholarships and service grants, volunteer for local nonprofits, and advocacy on issues that affect women and children. Zonta works to improve women's lives, their children's lives, and the communities in which we live and work. Zonta is working to make gender equality a reality for women and girls worldwide. Zonta International and the Zonta Club of Olympia envision a world in which women's rights are recognized as human rights, and every woman is able to achieve her full potential. In such a world, women have access to all resources and are represented in decision-making positions on an equal basis with men. In such a world, no woman lives in fear of violence. Thank you again for this honor.
Thank you, Linda. Is anybody else speaking? No? Okay. Questions or comments?
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Anything from you, Commissioner?
I'm just glad to read this proclamation.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't think my niece in Colorado, I've got several nieces, but the one in Colorado is, I don't think she's a member of Zonta.
We should fix that.
Yes.
But she's doing everything down there that you're espousing and that you do, about empowering women and keeping them safe and equality, the whole thing. It's just, I might have to call her now.
I would hope so. And, you know, Zonta is not just for female members. We have lots of male members in our club, so we welcome all of you to become Zantians as well.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner.
Honor and Empower, the Centennial Anniversary of Zonta International. Whereas Zonta International was founded in Buffalo, New York, on November 8th, 1919, under the leadership of Myron DeForest. And whereas since its inception, Zonta International has strived to empower women professionally through service and advocacy. And whereas Zonta International is a global service organization of 29,000 members in 1,200 Zonta clubs located in 63 countries around the world. And whereas Zonta International has advocated for women and children worldwide through affiliation with the United Nations since 1969, holding general consultative status with the UN Economic and Social Council, and participatory status with the Council of Europe. And whereas Zonta International has funded service and educational projects worldwide. These include famine relief for orphaned children, established in the Amelia Earhart Fellowship in her honor, established Student Z and Golden Z Clubs, and launched the Zonta Says No to Violence Against Women campaign, among others. And whereas Zonta Club of Olympia, existing since 1928, is a member of Zonta International District 8. The Zonta Club of Olympia, through service, advocacy, and fundraising, has given thousands of dollars in scholarships to women, supplies to local children, and community grants to local nonprofits serving women and families. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Thurston County Commissioners hereby proclaims November 8th, 2019, as Honor and Empower, the Centennial Anniversary of Zonta International Day. Signed by your Board of County Commissioners.
Come on up here. There you go, Linda. Yes, come on in. Everybody get in. Thank you all so much for coming. Yeah, perfect, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
She can also join and be an intern.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. I love that.
They are perfect.
Okay, good for you. Okay, thank you.
We now have a presentation of the Washington State Department of Transportation, WAZDOT.
Matt?
Matt, are you coming up?
You're coming up.
Looks like you are now. Oh, it's an all skate. Let's everybody come up.
Well, I guess the county agent here will introduce the guests.
Good afternoon. Kathleen Davis, Director of Local Programs within Washington State DOT. And with me is Dan Mathis, the Division Administrator for the Federal Highway Administration. And the fun part of our jobs is we get to go around the state and do the Awards of Excellence. This is a collaboration amongst both of our agencies and recognizing local agencies who excel in delivery of federal aid projects. We're looking at... Thurston County does a marvelous job in looking after their citizens on their roadways, and so I really want to applaud you in that, as well as your passion for restoring fish habitats. So I realize that there was a covert on this corridor that you weren't able to improve. So thank you for that, and I think Scott or Jennifer and her team, Brian Diaz, our Southwest Region Local Program Engineer, also is, him and his team support the county on a day-to-day basis, so congratulations.
Yes, Commissioners and guests, it is my pleasure also to jointly with Kathleen to make this presentation of what I think is a really cool project. I've lived in Olympia now for about 18 years, and I used to pass through that area of East Olympia, which I kind of consider that the downtown part of East Olympia. But, you know, it really needed a little bit of work. It needed to have some improved pedestrian, bicycle facilities, and accommodation, as well as just sort of dress it up a little bit to make it more inviting. And I think that exactly what this project has done. I think the project meets your vision and your mission, and I congratulate you, Jennifer, Scott, and the rest of the team that delivered the project and brought it to Thurston County. So again, congratulations on another award. I see back there you received one, and remember Kathleen and I giving a presentation a few years ago as well to Thurston County, so keep up the great work and congratulations.
Thank you, and thank you Kathleen as well. Any questions or comments? Do you have more to say? Oh, come on up then, please, Jennifer.
Hi, Jennifer Walker, Thurston County Public Works Director. Thank you. As with everything that happens in Public Works, it takes a team. So we absolutely appreciate local programs, Federal Highway Administration recognizing us for the work. We were able to take $900,000 that the Board approved for this project, leverage that to get 100 or $1.8 million in grant money for this $2.7 million project. So, thank you. Ultimately, it's benefiting the citizens of Thurston County because it is a safety improvement project. We did also improve habitat and stormwater as well. I'm going to introduce Scott Lindblum, the County Engineer, and he will thank specifically our team members.
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners. Certainly, this is a great honor to get this award, but a lot of the hats off, I think, go to you, the Commissioners, for, you know, your approving the budgets, the planning, and supporting our program. But certainly, I want to recognize some of the key staff that made this possible. Matt Unzelman, right here, our new traffic engineer, but at the time a project engineer for this project. We've got Steve Bricker, Kevin White, Matt Balder, and Mike English is not here, but I just wanted to mention his name. I like his name. So Mike English is not here.
He's probably watching at home.
But, you know, in addition to the folks that are here to get recognized, there's a huge group of folks behind the scenes that it really takes to make this happen, whether it's our survey folks that are out there throughout the whole project during the planning, design, and construction, or real estate services staff that works with all the individuals out there that we're acquiring right away from. Can't forget the rest of our construction staff, our administrative staff. I mean, it's, as Jennifer mentioned, it is truly a huge team effort to make this happen. And I'm grateful for the chance I have to work with these fine professionals. Every day makes my job enjoyable and a lot, lot better, so thank you.
Thank you. Matt, do you say anything?
No, the only thing I'd add, don't forget about April. She's the one that makes us all look good.
Look good, she makes you look good.
That's the only thing I have to add.
Questions or comments?
Well, I just want to say I'm...
We'll do that in a minute.
I'm new on board, but the number of accolades and big projects and, you know, that this team has been racking up of late, I don't think that's a coincidence. I take it as a reflection of our staff, quality of our staff, and it just makes me proud to be a part, associated with you guys because we get, I can say that Commissioners, my seatmates can correct me, I don't think we get a ton of positive comments from the public about things. People tend to, you know, pipe up when they, but I have gotten numerous positive comments, maybe all of them that I've gotten relate to Public Works projects, the way you guys have done chip seal projects, the way you guys have done fish culvert repairs. So, I mean, obviously, there's something working with our Public Works Department, and I'm really proud of that, and yeah, keep it up.
Commissioner?
In the sake of brevity, ditto.
And I don't know brevity, so. In 35 years of law enforcement and in three years as a Commissioner, this is new to you, not getting criticized and critiqued all the time and being called names, but yeah, get used to it. But I am graced with this position from all the shoulders that kind of carried me here. So, yeah, you're saying, you Commissioners, you did this, you approve, we approved a budget. We approved it. But you folks and you folks did the dadgum work, and it is beautiful out there. And so I really hope that, I don't know if there's two plaques, but you have one down at Public Works in your office as well, because ladies and gentlemen that did this work and just put their heart and soul into it need the pats on the back. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, an award? Picture?
Yes.
I have pictures. Come on, this way. Stop it.
I'll just stand right here close behind you.
They can't even see me. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you very, very much. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Kathleen. Thank you. Yes, I haven't seen you in a long time, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay, and now Emergency Services. And coming up is Kurt Harden, Emergency Services Director.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kurt Harden, Emergency Services Director. I'm here to introduce some new emergency management staff that have come on recently. So I want to talk about each one of them individually. I've got three new staff members here, and then after that, I'll let them talk a little bit about themselves and answer any questions you may have. The first one is Mike Presswood. He started August 19th with Emergency Management. He's a half-time Emergency Management Coordinator that the Commissioners that you all approved in the current budget to help South County municipalities and jurisdictions with their emergency management planning. And so he comes, he retired from the Army in 2002 after over 20 years of service. He was then worked with Thurston County Public Health as a bioterrorism program manager. He's been at St. Pete's Hospital as an emergency manager there, and he worked at Department of Agriculture as an emergency manager for several years, and then also with the Bethel School District as an emergency manager. And then he decided to take a break from Emergency Management and decided to work at Cabela's Boat Sales for a little while. But you can see he's got a lot of experience in emergency management. His hobbies include his three grandchildren, grandsons, building and flying remote-controlled airplanes. That's before we used to call them, you know, we call them drones now, I think, but back then we called them remote-controlled. And then our second person that we want to introduce, her name's Daphne Reeves. She started with us on September 16th, Administrative Assistant, and she's backfilling Karen Axeman's position when Karen retired from a longtime service in the county. Daphne came from South Puget Sound Community College, where she was an Administrative Assistant for the Technology Division for over five years. Prior to that, she managed a café here locally in Thurston County. She's been a Tomwater resident for most of her life and just, lives just a few short minutes away from the Tilly campus. She now loves her commute. She's got a three-mile commute, whereas before she had a much longer commute. So now, what we didn't tell her is the person who lives closest to the office gets called first during disasters. She lives with her fiance and her two sons, who are 10 and 8, and her soon-to-be stepdaughters, who are 8 and 5. She says people often refer to them as the blended family, as the Brady Bunch. She enjoys traveling and being outside. She's currently teaching self-taught on water painting. And then also, she's, would like to thank Commissioner Hutchins, if I understand correctly, with the bee incident. Apparently, she met you for the first time, there was a bee, she walked out of the office, you were walking out of the office, a bee.
Oh, yeah. Oh, my goodness, that's right, yeah.
So, and I'm very appreciative that everybody kept their heads, the cool, common collective with the bee, because I didn't want to have to come out and use the epi on Daphne over the first week of working at the office.
I'm getting ready to shoot it.
So, our third person, Tabitha Laird, started November 1st last Friday. She's an Emergency Management Coordinator and taking over as the Homeland Security Region 3 Coordinator, and she, that was the one where Jesse Chapin used to be there, and she moved on to DNR. Tabitha previously worked at the Washington State Emergency Management Division for six years in a lot of different areas, but her last position was she was the Fire Management Assistant Grant Program Director, and she had to deal with all the fire chiefs across the state of Washington. So after surviving that, she feels that just working with the fire chiefs in five counties is like a step up. She served in various response activities in the State Emergency Operations Center to include the Oso landslide, wildland fires, and other activations. Prior to working at the state, Tabitha lived in Texas, just outside of Austin, where she worked for State Farm Insurance and a Chamber Leader, Chamber of Commerce. She does live in the South Bay area here in Thurston County with her husband, her son, and three dogs, and she spends time outside, either in the garden chasing after her toddler or any number of parks in the local area. However, we did find something negative in Tabitha's background. We couldn't stop the hiring process, which apparently she's an avid Dallas Cowboys fan, but we couldn't stop the hiring process after we found out that, so we just have to live with that. So I would like them to come up to the microphone, your subject to your questions or answering, say a little bit more about themselves.
Mike, you're first. Well, any questions, Commissioners?
Actually, I've been here before, so it's really a pleasure to be back. I've had opportunity over the years to work with our Emergency Services folks, and bar none, you have a great crew there, so it's really a pleasure to be back.
You do, thank you.
Well, welcome, is my home.
Welcome aboard, Mike, great to meet you.
Yeah, Mike, thank you, and thank, I'm very grateful for your service, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate you done.
I'm just happy to be here, so thanks for having me.
We're glad to have you.
Yes, welcome.
Hello, I'm Tabitha, a little shorter than everybody else. I'm happy to be here as well.
Okay, well, I've got, it's something to say real quickly. Tabitha, first, you're not going to find good authentic Tex-Mex here in Thurston County. And I bet you miss it, don't you?
I do.
That's about the best food I've had around is Tex-Mex down there, beautiful. And if I were to sing happy birthday to someone, who might that be? Who's got the closest birthday? Oh, Daphne. Is that yesterday? Yeah, happy birthday to you. I'm not going to sing it, but happy birthday to you. All right, thank you very much, and welcome, welcome to the family.
Thank you, Commissioners, and we do appreciate the three of them coming in and reinforcing and helping our emergency management team. They've blended in very well together.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Kurt, very much.
Thank you.
Now, believe it or not, we're 40 minutes into this program, and we're getting to agenda item number one. And that's the opportunity for the public to address the Board. First, if you haven't done so already, please silence your phones, and the Board, when you're addressing the Board, please address the Board, and not anybody else, like the audience, but address the Board. We do not respond to public comment or questions. This is our chance to listen to you. We jot down notes, and staff will take notes and such, and then we'll be, there'll be follow-up on specific items at a later date. Speakers are limited to three minutes each to address the Board, and you're not allowed to donate your speaking time to another person. The Board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for a good cause. No comments that allude or offensive to a reasonable person. What's a reasonable person? Yeah, that's always...
Bee.
And bee, respectful, please. No outbursts of any kind, no comments that are commercial in nature, like a promotion for a commercial business, nothing inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, and any remarks about landing, pending land use permits wouldn't be appropriate because that could come before the Board eventually on appeal. And finally, any material that's provided to the county may be considered public records subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 42.56 of the RCW. So when I call you up, I have the sign-up sheet here, and if you haven't signed up, you'll still have an opportunity to address the Board. LaVonita Bomar has the control for the three-minute timer. It'll time down to zero, you'll hear a chime, whatever that buzz is, and then you know your time is up. I will call the people up in order, and I'll call the first one up, and then I'll let the other second person know who's on deck to come up. And so the first up is going to be Sharon, no, it's, okay, John Pettit. John Pettit followed by Jack Grimes.
I'm going to put my eye to it, I trust you.
Followed by Jack Grimes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's John Pettit, I live out off of Rich Road. I have to fit three things in the three minutes, so I'll try to be very quick with this, and hopefully you'll have a pencil in your hand, because I have a couple of notes which I'd like to address too. County Manager is going to be issuing several elements regarding the budget issues and want you to approve certain, adopt certain things in the budget. Well, the first thing that he's going to bring up is going to be to adopt Appendix G. Appendix G, of course, is part of the budget. I had made comment at the budget hearing, and of course, I highly object to the adoption of that particular appendix, because that particular appendix, it actually indicates that you, as a Board of County Commissioners, intend not to do current maintenance that's necessary, such as even cleaning the Manfred roofs. If that is in fact what you choose, and that's how you want to be, then at least you'll be clear on the record that you do not plan on doing any maintenance on this building until 2025 regarding the roofs. Otherwise, you need to make and amend that to bring it back up to the current timeframe and show us that you care about the buildings, and that would be complying to law that you have to maintain the facilities. The second item is under Item G, the Operation Budget Adjustment. I kind of find this one interesting, line item six particulars are one I'm interested in, but I'm not sure, since I looked at your calendar, it indicates that you plan on having adjustments to the Amendment 2 budget changes. Why would you be accepting a element of the adopting a budget when you intend on amending it potentially within a couple of days? Now, part of the issue here, of course, is Item Number Six is a proposal for the potential election to come forward with the new courthouse plan, and that shows $177,500 for that election win. In fact, you could probably reduce costs if you choose to move forward by moving it to November down to probably a figure around $25,000. This is another notable thing, and certainly something the public probably would be disappointed in if you were to proceed forward. I would suggest that you vote no on that. Let's get these documents straightened out before you start adopting them. The third item I'm going to be very brief about, which is I understand that there's some questions about November 29th illegal meeting of 2018. I'm sure, like usual, the procedure will be saying, oh, we didn't do anything wrong. Well, it's clear, it shows for itself, if one wants to deny it, it becomes a malicious action instead of a corrective action to what should be happening, and that may reach the content of being an intent to steal millions of taxpayer dollars because you don't want to comply with what the law would say. I suggest you make sure that you just deal with the facts and make it right with the citizens. Thank you.
Jack Grimes, followed by Terry Stanley Ballard.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Jack Grimes. I live on 76th Avenue Northeast. I appreciate the hard work that you are doing, and I also appreciate that you allow us an opportunity to address our concerns to you. My main concern still has to do with the proposed ordinance for the additional property tax to build a new courthouse or office facility. The citizens of the county shouldn't be required to pay $177,000 for a special election, which basically only rewards a special interest group, largely the local attorneys, if it's going to be in...
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Jack Grimes. I live on 76th Avenue Northeast. I appreciate the hard work that you are doing, and I also appreciate that you allow us an opportunity to address our concerns to you. My main concern still has to do with the proposed ordinance for the additional property tax to build a new courthouse or office facility. The citizens of the county shouldn't be required to pay $177,000 for a special election, which basically only rewards a special interest group, largely the local attorneys. If it's going to be enacted, it should compete with all of the rest of the special levies that we already support for schools, fire districts, port, and then people can really see what kind of impact that has on them. We currently, in Thurston County, are the seventh highest property taxed county in the state. Okay? There are published reports that we pay 3.5% of our income in property taxes in Thurston County. There needs to be the improvements that we're talking about, but you need to find a way to make that happen without imposing initial burden on most of the citizens. There's a large number of us that have fixed income. We're not getting cost of living increases. And the property tax increase goes up every year, whether we enact a new ordinance or not. The assessor reassesses it every year. Look at your statements, everybody that owns property. You're seeing a large increase every year in the value of the property. And this is a per thousand tax, so you're not just going to pay it one year at a fixed rate. It will continue to increase over time. My next issue is really that there's a proposal to change the numbers on the commission for the election or for the elected official salaries. I still think you need a supermajority or 70% of the people in attendance. I think 60 is a little too much of a cushion for being able to get that through when maybe there's some different opinions that need to be addressed. Also, in today's agenda setting, you have a whole list of items proposed to be accepted as one unit. There is a totally inadequate explanation of what each one of them represents that needs to be part of the information published before the meeting of what you're actually adopting, so that those of us that haven't been to the work sessions will know what you're really intending to do. Thank you very much again for what you do and the opportunity to address you.
Thank you. Terry, followed by Stephen Jones.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name's Terry Ballard. I reside in Tanglewild. I'm a 35-year veteran, retiring in 2012. What we call the road, retire on active duty, and I was born here in Washington State. First caveat would be to the speaker that was previous to me. It's interesting to watch your meeting during, watching your morning meeting, and being concerned with a 60 supermajority vote. But this, this whole courthouse was done on a 50% plus one vote, simple majority. I was wondering why your concern changed when we're dealing with like $400 billion and a, between a simple majority and a, and a supermajority. But anyway, these, these illegal meetings, and you can write this down, it's RCW 42.30.120. Two of you have had four illegal meetings, and one of you had had three. Well, that very, that very RCW states that the first illegal meeting is $500 personal fine to each one of you. And then, and caveat to that, it's $1,000 per meeting after that. Well, that's going up to the Superior Court. And Mr. Edwards, he noted that it's easier to do it at the lowest level possible, which I'm coming to a court with attorney fees and all this, you know. And I agree with that. Okay? And here's my solution. That you get rid, that you get with Superior Court, make out a deal with that judge, and donate your money. Now, I belong to the Veterans Legislative Coalition for the state of Washington, and we sponsor staff and help write bills for veterans. Since it's in the name of veterans, why don't we donate that money to that cause? Because it's a 501(c)(3) as well. But other than that, I'm here to talk about your stormwater. It is illegal to have a combined system of stormwater. Illegal, meaning hooked up to sewage. We had a problem out at Tam O Sham, okay? And that was like in June, was the Tam O Sham one, problem. And just recently, we had a 10-year, five-year, six-year, whatever plan, okay? And we noted that in one case, it wasn't a combined sewer system, but in the later case, it was. What happens is we get an abundance of, of stormwater combined into the sewer system, and the sewer systems cannot handle this. So what do they do with that? They dump it on the ground, or it goes into, capital A, goes into butt inlet, goes into all the waters and streams and everything. So you best help out with your stormwater. And one caveat to that is, the stormwater system had a change in Tanglewild.
You'll be wrapping it up pretty quick, Terry?
On the corner, I'm wrapping it up.
Thank you.
On the corner of Carpenter and Husky, there's three drywells there. Tanglewild no longer feeds into the stream, okay? Since 2011, my fee, my $40 per year fee for my septic tank has been a cash cow for your whole septic tank program. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Stephen Jones, followed by Sharon Kuntz.
With permission of the commissioner, if we could flip the order a little bit?
That's fine with me. Sure.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Stephen. I mean, Sharon.
What'd you say?
Be silly. Go ahead. When you're ready.
I still didn't hear you. What are you, what are you teasing me with?
I called you Stephen.
Oh, very cute. Okay. Sharon Kuntz runs of Rocky Prairie. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm just going to read a couple of things to you. First, from the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, a grant application they made a couple of years back, trying to buy the West Rocky Prairie area that we're concerned about, owned by the port near Millersylvania State Park. Just, just a couple of things, although on our website, you can find an entire, I guess, white paper on, on why that site is so important to them. West Rocky Prairie has been recommended for protection by the Interagency Prairie Landscape Working Group, which includes DNR, Department of Natural Resources, sorry, all these initials, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Center for Natural Land Management, Friends of Puget Prairie, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, Joint Base Lewis McCord in Thurston County. That was a couple of years ago. And the knowledge that, of course, with all the problems you folks have with Rocky, with pocket gophers, that this is an ideal place for them. In fact, they've been relocated onto the fish and wildlife property next door and have migrated northward, and now they're seeing mounds from them up on the port property in the northern part, as I understand it. This property supports 13 listed or priority wildlife and vegetative species, and is a vital piece of a large migration corridor through Millersylvania State Park, the undeveloped tree farm, et cetera, nearby. It's also the home to, and I'm sure I've said this before, so pardon me for repeating, because I'm just reading from this, but it's, it's home to the headwaters of Beaver and Allen Creek. And seeing your public works people here earlier reminded me that you folks spent some money and time building a culvert and another project that protected Beaver Creek. It's an important one for you because Coho salmon reside there and travel down that, down both of those creeks, in fact. So it seems to me that that's another reason for you folks to be really interested in protecting this property from inappropriate development, which is threatened by the North Point people. This, I talked about the pocket gophers. I didn't mention the Oregon spotted frog, which also has a breeding ground within Beaver Creek and is located on the property next door. Also next door is the wildlife watching and hunting. They hunt both big game and upland birds there. Would be nice if this were an uninterrupted corridor, as it is now, and left that way. The other thing I wanted to just discuss briefly, oh, good grief, is a matter of a moral question, I think. And that is, there's a settlement agreement that runs with this property, and it's connected to the special use permit that was issued by your, issued and approved by your county hearings examiner. And that special use permit and settlement agreement run with the property. And they say, quote, "When the mining is complete," and this has been a gravel mine, as you know, "the property would revert to non-industrial uses. The proposed reclamation plan would create lakes, wetlands, and upland forest areas." And that's important to remember, that you have a settlement agreement. Now, I don't know, maybe you're not compelled somehow to protect it, but I've got to say, I think there'd be a certain amount of shame involved in ignoring your own hearing examiner's findings, rules, and permits, don't you? I do. Think about the message that that sounds, that that sends to citizens and about agreements all across the county. It's just one more reason, along with the myriad found in the comprehensive plan and the Growth Management Act, that the North Point rezone should be a non-starter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Stephen Jones, followed by Walker Stevens.
Thank you very much, commissioners. So the opportunity to very briefly speak to you. My name is Stephen Jones. I'm a 45-year resident of Thurston County. I'm appearing before you today on behalf of two organizations, the Capital Bicycling Club and a separate organization, the CBC Bicycle Racing Team. We are proud to be part of the coalition to protect Rocky Prairie from North Point's industrialization. And I'm speaking on a very narrow point of what this proposed project will do to cycling in Thurston County. Maytown Road and Tilly Road intersect at, right at the gate to the Rocky Prairie property. They are very popular cycling routes for families, athletic cyclists, recreational cyclists heading to the South County area, down to Bucauda, to Nino, the Johnson Creek Loop, down to Rochester. They are used every single day by cyclists, your families, your neighbors, your community members. I cycle the entire length of Tilly Road this morning. If this project is approved, there will be thousands and thousands of trucks on those roads every single day. No sane cyclist will ever again ride their bicycle down Maytown Road or Tilly Road, because there will be thousands of semi-truck trailer traffic and train traffic on those roads. This is a six to seven million square foot industrial warehouse being plopped in the middle of an area that has to be described as rural, pastoral, and even bucolic. This proposed project is so completely inconsistent with the nature of that area. We, the Capital Bicycling Club, and the CBC Bicycle Racing Team, as proud partners with the Coalition to Protect Rocky Prairie, ask you very sincerely and very desperately, please do not put this rezone proposal on your docket for next year. It will have an incredible impact on that area that is not justified by the small number of part-time jobs that will be generated in this area. There are other areas of the county that are already zoned for industrial warehouses, Hawks Prairie, Air Industrial Park in Tacoma. There is no reason to switch the zoning from residential to industrial, a complete, complete swing, 180-degree turn from the nature of that area. Please do not do this to South Thurston County. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, sir. Walker Stevens.
Hello, commissioners. Thank you for having me be able to speak here. My name's Walker Stevens. I'm born and raised in Thurston County. Went to North Thurston High School. A few years ago, I helped start a project called Ho Ho Hobos in Olympia. It's a street project. Every winter, we pay homeless people to make Christmas wreaths and then sell Christmas wreaths. So it's an informal employment scheme. And also, that was kind of the inception originally, was like, oh, how can we inject people, like, how can we get people working? How can we get people constructive? But it became something really a lot bigger than that. The ownership that the homeless community has over this project is, is really impressive, and really, I think a lot of what we do is work to change the culture of homelessness in Olympia, get people, you know, inject that element of pride, inject that element of self-stability. Last year, we employed over 100 people making wreaths. But the reality is, we're like this little tiny plywood shack. We're basically a fireworks stand. We started in a squally fireworks stand, actually. And our capacity, we can't hire that many people. Last year, we hired 100 people and over 100 people, and that was us totally maxed out. And that's just making this tiny little drop of impact in people's lives. It's not really doing a whole lot. But we've been doing this for four years. This will be our fifth season. And we're just really, we've been working with a lot of woodworkers in town who are helping us design really easy, fun-to-make wooden toys. This is a 3D tic-tac-toe game. This makes like a shelf-stable product, and, you know, people, we can, I think, expand our capacity. We've been doing this for four years. It's kind of like we've gone to college. We've learned a lot. Every year, it's changed a lot. We want to do this. We want to turn, we want to like a full-on Santa's workshop, building wooden toys. And we have the capacity to do this. We have the volunteer base to do this. What we don't have is the space to do this. And luckily, there is a really, really perfect publicly-owned space owned by Lot, the abandoned Fish and Wildlife Building, which is, there's mixed reports of whether or not the building itself is condemned. We don't want the building. We want the shed on the east side of the building, right next to the Union Gospel Mission. Really, really perfect location for us. This building is slated, the whole compound's slated to be torn down in 2020, so it's not even like we could do any damage. The value of having a workshop space, which is employing people from the street, empowering people from the street, building pride, building, you know, honest work, honest pay for honest work, the value of that compared to a locked, publicly-owned building, we believe is huge. It would be a much better use of this resource in our community. So I want to talk to all of you, but specifically Ty Mensah, because you sit on the Lot Board. What we're asking is to, if you could please help us get on the agenda for the November 13th meeting, so that we could talk more about this. Also, you know, we approached Lot, and Lot said, no, sorry, you can't do that. And it's, we understand, we kind of look like a whole bunch of homeless people, and, you know, nobody takes us seriously. But we have contractors, publicly bonded licensed contractors, that are more than willing to look at the space with us. So our two asks are getting on this November 13th agenda and letting a licensed contractor look at the space to determine if it's safe and sound to be used for something really cool. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts the list of folks that have signed up. Is there anybody that would like to address the board that has not signed up? You're welcome to come up now. Or now. Or now. Okay.
Well, can I, I have some articles about our work in...
Yeah, you want to drop it over here? That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Great. Thank you, sir. That takes us to item number two on the agenda, County Manager's Update.
Thank you, commissioner. I'd like to follow up to the deputy prosecutor, one that you received, Mr. Pettit, last week, and also today, related to the same item. In reference to the November 29, 2019, as he stated, illegal meetings where the board approved revenue sources in 2000, for the budget 2019. So it was the meeting on November 29, 2018. On that day, there were two appointments, one in the morning, which you held a public hearing related to the revenues, and the board in the afternoon approved the revenue sources for 2019. As a matter of context, under the Open Publix Meeting Act, the Board of County Commissioners is required to adopt an ordinance setting forth the time of withholding regular meetings. That is under RCW 42.30.7070. The county also must adopt an ordinance setting forth the time for holding such public meetings, which you have. The meeting schedule is codified in Thurston County Code 2.02.020 and 2.02.030. Any resolutions or ordinances must be adopted in one of the meetings in time set for in this code, and that is under that RCW 42.30.0360. This has been looked with our prosecutor, deputy prosecutor attorney, and the facts related to the November 29, 2018. And again, in the morning, you held a public hearing that the county properly noted the public hearing on the revenue sources for the 2019 budget. The hearing was held on Thursday, November 29, 2018, at 9:00 in the morning. This meeting time was identified as a regular meeting for the board, for the board meeting, in accordance to Thurston County Code 2.02.030 and the OPMA, the Open Publix Meeting Act. Also, in the afternoon, when the board took action on approving the revenue sources for 2019, the agenda was properly posted 24 hours before the meeting, again, in compliance with the OPMA. Actions were... Actions was, action was taken during this meeting after the public hearing, adopting the resolution identifying the revenue sources for 2018 budget. During that meeting, there was a conversation. It was a confusion as to what type of action the Board needed to take. Commissioner Edwards rectified that action, and the proper action was taken in the afternoon of November 29, 2018. Because the revenue resolution was adopted in a meeting time set forth by our county code in compliance with the OPMA, this action is valid, and that has been confirmed by the Deputy Prosecutor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Questions, comments?
I guess my only comment, just to make sure, so you're feeling that legal has reviewed this and we're okay? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. That takes us to Agenda Item Number Three, Consent Items A through F.
I would move to approve Consent Items A through F.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Consent Items A through F. Any discussion on any of these items?
No, sir.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Four, Department Items, Public Health and Social Services, Healthcare Authority Contract. And coming up, there we go. Please stand by. And we have Shelley Slaughter, PHSS Director, approaching now. Right on cue.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Shelley Slaughter, Director of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. This contract is for the Community Prevention and Wellness, also known as CPWI, with the Washington State Healthcare Authority Division of Behavioral Health and Recovery. This contract extends Thurston County Public Health and Social Services existing, existing contract for two additional years to carry out our fiscal agent and coalition coordination services for BuCota, Tenino, and Temwater School communities. The CPWI is a community-focused approach to preventing substance abuse in Washington State. It focuses state resources within 82 high-need communities. The program asks leaders in these communities to take on the challenges of preventing substance abuse in their towns and neighborhoods and to take a community-based approach to improving public health. This contract enables staff at Thurston County Public Health and Social Services to support and facilitate coalitions focused on school communities at two sites, BuCota, Tenino, and Temwater, to work on youth substance use prevention. This year, in addition to medicine take-back activities at both sites, we will be offering Nurse-Family Partnership and Strengthening Families programs in Tenino and BuCota, as well as Good Behavior Games, Guiding Good Choices, and mentoring with Big Brothers and Big Sisters in Temwater. This contract is for a total maximum consideration of $441,500 for duration of July 1, 2019, to June 2021, and supports Initiatives I and II of the Thurston County Strategic Plan. And if approved, we will feature this on our website and social media accounts. Any questions?
Any questions, comments, anything?
And this is pass-through money?
Partially. Our staff provides the coordination support for the community coalitions, as well as provides contract services with community agencies to carry out the work in those communities.
Thank you.
And the work that's done for Be That, which is pretty cool. The BuCota, Tenino Healthy Action Team can't be underrated. They do a great job down there. Anyway, so thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the Washington State Healthcare Authority Division of Behavioral Health and Recovery Community Prevention and Wellness Initiative Agreement Number K3944 to carry out fiscal agent and coalition coordination services for BuCota, Tenino, and Temwater Area School Communities with a total maximum amount of $441,500 for the duration of July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2021, and authorize the Public Health and Social Services Department Director to sign the agreement, as well as future amendments that do not change the dollar amount or duration of the agreement by more than 10%.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Who's the authority? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this topic?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you very much.
Agenda Item Number Five is Public Works, and it's the Mutual Aid and Assistance Agreement with the State of Washington. Hi, Tim.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager, Public Works. I'm here today requesting that the Board move to execute a Washington State Water/Wastewater Agency Response Network Mutual Aid and Assistance Agreement, WAYWARNE. Additionally, staff is requesting the Board move to identify the Public Works Water Resources Manager as authorized official and the Water Resources Technical Services Lead as alternate authorized official with regards to the WAYWARNE agreement. WAYWARNE is a mutual assistance program for water and sewer utilities in Washington State with 145 active members, including the cities of Lacey, Temwater, as well as Thurston County PUD. There is no cost associated with membership and no requirement to provide assistance to requesting utilities. Entering into the agreement would provide an additional level of redundancy in our ability to serve our ratepayers in an emergency. Because I know you'll ask, Thurston County Emergency Services has reviewed and is in support of the agreement. Entering into the agreement supports Initiative Number Eight of the County Strategic Plan to support robust and well-maintained infrastructure systems for a thriving community. Any questions?
Anything?
I guess, could I say that this falls under prior planning to prevent poor performance?
I think you could.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, are we prepared for a motion? I would move to identify the Public Works Water Resources Division Manager as authorized official and identify the Water Resources Technical Services Lead as alternate authorized official with regard to the WAWARN Mutual Aid and Assistance Agreement, and further move to execute the WAWARN Mutual Aid and Assistance Agreement.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to execute the WAYWARNE Mutual Aid and Assistance Agreement. Any further discussion? Nope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, very much. And for those folks in the audience and those at home, I'd like you to know that we're going to continue on with this meeting, and then we'll have a public hearing after, and then the Board of Health after that. So moving on to Item Number Six on the agenda, Community Planning, Economic Development, setting a public hearing regarding impact fees.
Christina Chapot, Senior Planner with Community Planning. I am here to request the Board set a public hearing on December 3, 2019, at 3:00 PM or soon thereafter, to take testimony on the proposed amendments to Title 25 impact fees. Title 25 authorizes the collection of impact fees for several school districts, including Rochester, Yelm, Temwater, Olympia, Griffin, and Tenino. The proposed amendment would authorize the county to collect impact fees on behalf of North Thurston School District as well. There is an additional amendment, or excuse me, there is an addition to that amendment. For minor corrections, there has been a department name change since the Title 25 was adopted, and we would like to clean up and correct that particular name change in the title. The draft document is available for public review on the Community Planning's website, and a public hearing notice will be published in the Olympian. Interested parties will be sent notice prior to the public hearing, AIS, to add after 3:00 PM or soon thereafter.
No, but I'm wondering if I shouldn't have a question or comment.
Well, my thing is, we read the motion as it is, and then we amend it, or then we second it, then we amend it to add that wording, or soon thereafter, and then second it and then vote. Get this spaghetti squared away.
We might need a little help through this one.
Yeah. So we're going to just read it as is.
Okay. That's what I'm wondering. I would move to set a public hearing for December 3, 2019, at 3:00 PM at the Thurston County Courthouse, Building One, in Room 280, to receive public comment on amendment of Title 25 impact fees.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded, and now we do a friendly amendment. Now, any discussion? There we go. Any discussion?
Yeah, there is some.
Okay. And what's the discussion?
Well, I'm concerned about the amendment. Maybe I'd ask the county manager.
Now, we, right, so now we're talking about, would you like to add on or soon thereafter? Right after, at 3:00 PM or soon thereafter?
And for those of you out in the community that are watching this, this is, you're making sausage at work here. This really doesn't mean much. It's just a technicality, a cover, a fluctuation in time that we might be saddled with.
Right. But don't put that in the motion.
No, but not today.
Yes, exactly.
So I would make a friendly motion.
Amendment.
Amendment, a friendly amendment.
And after, let's say, at 3:00 PM?
After 3:00 PM, that it say, as soon as...
3:00, or soon thereafter.
As soon thereafter. Okay, that's it.
Yes.
So it gives us some time.
Yes.
Is that right?
That is correct.
You can tell we didn't make any notes ahead of time.
So you have moved to make that amendment?
Yes. I'd like to make a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Is that okay?
I can second that.
So it's moved and seconded to add or soon thereafter to the original motion.
We vote on the amendment?
Now we vote on the amendment. So all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. And now, it's been moved and seconded, and we've had discussion on the original action or motion.
And now we've concluded.
And we've concluded that. So now, all in favor, say.
We may consider taking a vote on the motion as amended.
As amended. Okay.
Okay. Well, I'd make, I would consider taking a vote as amended on this particular motion.
And it's been seconded.
I'd second that. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Please, no. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Chris, thank you. Next time, include that stuff already. Please. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Seven, County Manager Comprehensive Plan. There's a whole list of comprehensive plans, stuff.
I will give the word to the Assistant County Manager and my Director.
Okay.
Thank you. And good afternoon, Commissioners. Items A through J on your agenda are all related to the budget. So in the interest of time and with your permission, I'm just going to quickly walk through each of them, and you don't need to introduce me each time. So the Chapter 3640 RCW and many other state laws govern the budget process in the county. Specifically, 364250 governs the biennial budget process and requires a midterm review and adjustment, which you're doing here this afternoon. In accordance with 3640070, you held a public hearing on the first Monday in October, that was October 7, 2019, and reviewed all of the actions and took public comment on them, made your final decisions thereafter, which were no changes to the preliminary budget that had been published. And so these motions that I'm about to walk you through are all related to the adoption of that budget adjustment. So Item A is the adoption of Appendix G of the Comprehensive Plan. RCW 36.70A.070 requires that the county adopt a capital facilities element of its comprehensive plan and that that plan is reviewed on a regular basis. You adopt this each year along with the budget. So I would recommend to you that you adopt Appendix G of the Comprehensive Plan.
Yes.
Okay. This, now, this is one of the items that was brought to our attention and which I have a concern over, and that is the $250,000 for maintenance on, fascia, I guess, is what...
Specifically, on the mansard roof?
Yes.
If I may...
That's in there, and it's, looks like it's set to be delayed for five years. And so there, I have a difficulty on supporting that because we've had citizens step forward that have said they'd actually do that for free, but that hasn't come to fruition yet. So on that particular item, I don't feel comfortable moving and then voting on that that could be a delay for five years. So I'd like to hear.
So if I may comment on that specific item, the mansard roof, that is the roof facing that you see on these buildings, that orange-painted facing, that is cosmetic, if you will. The mansard, it's just a facing. It is not, it's my understanding that that is not the actual roof that protects these buildings. We do have maintenance projects built in to the capital facilities plan that does address the roofs. We are working on one right now in Building Three to stop the leaking in that building. It won't look any better than it does today, but it will be a project that protects the building. That project, because it is cosmetic, was pushed out, and other maintenance projects that actually protect these buildings were brought forward. However, I would say that this is simply a plan, and the fact that that project is slated, I believe, in 2025 can all, at any point in time, be moved forward by the Board when the funding becomes available or if you should designate funding for that project. I will be reaching out to the gentleman who suggested that they could assist the county with our roofs. That's on my to-do list, so that's going to be happening. It hasn't happened yet. But again, at any time, you could move that to a more imminent-year project and move that up in your priorities. But right now, because it's cosmetic and because we need projects that are intended to extend the life of these buildings, life and useful nature of these buildings, that one was pushed out.
Do you have any comments on this?
I recall one project, if it's that one or a related one, that related to actual functioning of the building, that the cost estimate doubled or tripled. We had to, can you remind me which one that was?
Yes. That, that is the roof that we're working on in Building Three. The cost estimate went, I should have looked this up. I, yeah, it did double, and I just am not remembering the exact number, and I can get that for you. But the price of actually fixing the roof, again, it's not going to look, those mansard face odds will still look equally bad, but the roof itself is, we're in the design phase of the repair.
And that's over a million dollars, I think?
It was close to a million dollars.
It was supposed to be 400 or 300, and it's like, it's almost a million.
That is correct.
Related to that particular project, there was a failure to upgrade any portions of the HVAC system. It's not about...
Is your microphone on?
It's not just the roof.
Oh, can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. Sorry. Yeah, Commissioner, what you're recalling is close to a million dollars of original cost, that cost. But it was, is also, we need to replace portions of the HVAC system because we couldn't just go ahead and fix the roof without addressing that component that is part of the roof as well. And that by itself... And that by itself turned out to be quite more expensive than we were expecting.
So, yeah, I mean, there's been a lot of comment that where the county has failed to maintain the buildings, and I, there's a big part of that narrative I just don't understand, because I, we went through budget item, several of which related to repairs, some of them very expensive repairs. You know, there's things that are cosmetic, there are things that are preventative, getting out in front of problems, and then there's responsive things. And, you know, you can criticize the portfolio of expenditures that we've been able to budget for, but there's a considerable amount of money going into these buildings. In my view, the ones that were budgeted are a lot more important than the cosmetic ones that have been delayed. So I'm comfortable with it, but...
We've had this discussion several times, cosmetics, even insurance companies won't pay for something that's cosmetic. So we made the decision willfully and knowingly to put off the cosmetic type stuff and appropriate money for something like you said, Rob, and that would protect the building, but I think more importantly, protect the employees too. And so I'm okay with that as well, the cosmetic stuff, let it go. Still going to hear complaints, and I have, that, oh, we're not putting money into this facility, shame on you. And then I hear, oh, you're putting money in this building, you want a new one, shame on you. So we can't win. But I don't care about the cosmetic, it does look unsightly, but I care about the actual infrastructure that's going to save the building from further deterioration and protect employees, so I'm okay with it too. Your turn.
It's my understanding that even though you put something on the capital plan, I guess, that doesn't mean that it has to happen at that point in time, or that you can actually make changes to that as time goes along, is that right? I mean, you're not locked in just because it's not on there?
Well, the capital facilities plan, for the county to conduct a capital project, it needs to be, in some fashion, on the capital facilities plan, somewhere on the plan. It doesn't have to be in that particular year. Once a project is on the plan, you can move it between years, you can adjust the price, it doesn't have to be for the specific amount that's in the capital facilities plan, but the project does have to be in the plan. And in accordance with the direction we've gotten from the Washington State Department of Commerce, we can have, and we do have, program items that cover many things that may come up, like emergencies. Just recently, as you know, a component of the heating system in Building 3 failed, and we needed to repair it, and we're still waiting on parts for that repair. But the project, the small project that it became, is covered in capital projects for that building. It's not specifically called out, repair the heating elements, but it is covered in the projects, and according to the Department of Commerce, that is allowable way to go about covering those unexpected projects.
But also, and I think your question is whether when the board has the option to change the plan, you have the opportunity to do that on a yearly basis, because you do update the capital facilities plan on a yearly basis. And at that point, it's where you give the board the opportunity to change that. Also, you have the opportunity to amend the capital facilities plan during any given year. So all those options are available to you as the legislative authority.
Robyn, I'll use real quick, I don't know if you know this or not, because you may not, but you might, the part that we're still waiting for, is that because of the age of the equipment and it's hard to find it?
Yes. Yeah, there, we were able to find the specific parts we need somewhere back east, and they need to be shipped to us.
From an antique store or something?
But it was difficult to find the components, and we did a stopgap measure, we took the component that would work out of a chiller that we don't currently have turned on, because it's now winter, and put it in the boiler element that delivers the hot water that heats Building 3, so that we could continue to conduct business in the building. It's those kinds of challenges, they take quite a bit of time and staff effort, but we have to find the parts, the parts are expensive, and we try to get ahead of those things, but these are aging buildings.
And there's no warning sensor that indicates, hey, I'm getting ready to fail?
Right.
It just fails?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir.
That particular dollar amount for that was 250,000. Are there other dollar amount issues listed within there on other items that are affected with, if this was to pass or not pass?
So each project in the capital facilities plan, or also called the capital improvements plan or program, each project listed has a cost estimate, and we have identified where those monies would come from for each project, that's in accordance with state law. Now, are those estimates exactly what the project's going to cost? Not necessarily, they are our best guess at this time. So when it actually comes time to do the project, depending on time, scope, current market conditions, a lot of factors go in to what the project will actually cost, but we just have to have it on the plan, and it's our best guess of what it'll cost.
And so there's numerous other issues addressed on this particular plan?
The plan is pages and pages of projects that we have planned.
And this is one of the items on those many pages?
Yes.
I guess my concern is that I don't want to promote the philosophy that we're not taking care of our own building, that's, I mean, that's one of the things I've heard from the public about if we were to move into a new building. If you can't take care of this building, how are you going to take in, take care of a new building? So therein lies my dilemma of delaying that to that length of time. So I guess, is there any way, and is there a time element on this, that this must be done today? I'm not saying it couldn't be done today, but because it sounds like we've got probably a majority vote that would carry it through. But I'd just like to see it laid out for reality that we could do this. Just for example, if this, this group that has come forward, I don't know, a couple of months ago, and talked about the fact they'd be willing to come forward, I certainly wouldn't want to have them be delayed, they're willing to do it for, I mean, they said almost nothing, I don't know what that means, I'm sure we'll have to contribute money to it. Why couldn't that say for 20, you know, 2020 or something? And then if it didn't come to fruition, we could change it, that's, you know...
If the, if you should choose to go forward with that project, for whatever reason, we don't need to change the capital facilities plan. The fact that the project is on the plan in any year allows us to go forward as soon as we're ready to do so, so you don't need to amend the plan. And then to your question about, is there a time crunch to take this action, both the capital facilities plan and the transportation improvement plan must be adopted before you adopt the budget. So we put them in a specific order on the agenda so that you adopt these before you adopt the budget amendment. If you should choose to delay either of these items, you would be delaying the entire list of budget items on your agenda this afternoon.
Okay, is there more, do you have more?
I would like to defer to Commissioner Benson, see if he might be interested in making a motion on this particular issue.
I will move to set up, move, sorry, to adopt a resolution adopting Appendix G of the Comprehensive Plan of the 2020-2025 Capital Improvement Program.
And I'll second that. So it's been moved and seconded to adopt Appendix G of the Plan 2020 to 2025 Capital Improvement Program. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Nay?
Nay.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, I'm going to just move right along.
Yeah.
So item B is the adoption of the 2019-2020 midterm adjustments for the six-year transportation improvement plan. RCW 3681-130 requires the legislative authority of the county to adopt their annual road program that is reflected in the six-year transportation improvement plan. So I'm recommending adoption of this plan.
Okay. Any questions?
No, sir. I would move to adopt the 2019-2020 midterm budget adjustments for the six-year transportation improvement plan.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the 19 and 20 midterm budget adjustment for the six-year transportation improvement plan. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Okay, moving on. This next item C is the adoption of the cost allocation plan. This plan establishes the rates that are charged internally in the county to offices and departments for services such as civil legal advice from the prosecutor's office, payroll and finance support from the auditor's office, the HR support, many items within the county, the treasurer that handles our money. These costs are allocated out in accordance to the cost allocation plan, and guidance from the Office of the State Auditor of the State of Washington requires annual adjustment of the internal service rates. So we are asking you to approve the annual cost allocation plan that establishes those rates.
Any questions, comments, motion?
I would move to adopt the 2019-2020 midterm budget adjustment for the cost allocation plan.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the 19 and 20 midterm budget adjustment for the cost allocation plan, any discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.
D. Item D is the establishment of the rental and repair rates, and actually, that is also known as ERNR. RCW 3633A-040 requires an annual review of the rates for what is in state law called the Equipment Rental and Revolving Fund, also known as Equipment Rental Repair, Equipment Rental Replacement, but most people just call it ERNR. So there is a requirement for an annual review by the county legislative authority, and you are required to set the rates for ERNR, and that's what I am requesting that you do this afternoon.
All right, any questions?
Nope.
Is there a motion?
We discussed this, I mean, I don't remember it being broken out in this way, but there was a discussion, and we went through these rates, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I would move to adopt the 2019-2020 budget midterm adjustments for amendments to the county equipment rental and repair with associated changes to the equipment list.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the 19 and 20 midterm budget amendments for the ERNR, equipment rental and repair. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Item E is position control and classifications. RCW 3616070 places the responsibility to create and fund positions in all county offices and departments with the Board of County Commissioners. This specific action creates new FTEs for the auditor, the clerk, Superior Court, Information Technology Department, the sheriff's office, there's one position abolished in Juvenile Court, and there are many adjustment and reclassifications, and this action creates the classification of a law clerk for the Superior Court. So the position control is approval of all of these different actions related to positions in the county.
All right, any questions or comments?
No, sir.
Okay, motion?
I would move to adopt the 2019-2020 midterm budget adjustments for position control and new job classifications.
And I'll second that. So it's been moved and seconded to adopt the 2019-2020 midterm budget adjustments for position control and classifications. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
All right, number, our letter F.
Item F is the adjustment for salaries. RCW 3616070 also gives the legislative authority to the Board of County Commissioners to set salaries for all positions established for all offices and departments in the county, and this motion approves a funding for a 2.4% cost of living adjustment. The salaries are set for nonrepresented county employees, and for all employees where the union contract is tied to the cost of living, or the CPI, Consumer Price Index, which was 2.4% for this past year. It also provides funding for those contracts that are not yet finalized, where we're bargaining in good faith with the unions, but we're putting the money in the budget now with the assumption that there will be a cost of living adjustment in those final contracts.
All right, any questions or comments?
No, sir.
Motion?
I would move to adopt the 2019-2020 budget midterm adjustment for setting salaries.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the 2019 and 20 budget midterm adjustment for setting salaries. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, item G is the adoption of the operating budget midterm adjustments. RCW 3640-250 governs the biennial budget nature of the county's budget, this is the county's second biennial budget, and the state law requires a mid-biennium review and modification. So this budget has been duly published, you held a public hearing, and these are the operating costs adjusted as required by law.
Okay, any questions? Go ahead.
And in this midterm adjustment, this has the line item for the election that would be held in April of next year on the courthouse for, and I think it was 177,000, is that right?
I believe so.
Now, as I am opposed to that courthouse operation and the election on, the courthouse moving downtown, and the election that's affecting that in April, I am going to defer to my seatmates to see if somebody can make a motion on that, but I can't support that.
Before you take that action, if I may, there is a proviso in this budget that sets that amount of funding for the auditor's office that may be used solely for the costs associated to an election on the increase in the levy. And any money that is not used by the auditor for that specific purpose reverts back to the general fund at the end of the year. It's not as if the auditor could take that money and use it for other purposes if you don't run that election. If you ran it at some other time, then a portion of the funding would be used for election costs, in whichever election, the county will have to pay a share of the costs if it goes in one of the other elections, but that funding is... But that funding is provisoed to be used solely for the costs of an election, for the levy increase.
Okay.
And I guess recognizing that, my concern is that if we held that election either on a primary election day or a general election day, either in August or November, the cost to the taxpayers would be much less, so that's.
But you still wouldn't support it?
Yeah, I can't support that at this point. I know we've got talks ongoing about where are we going with this whole thing, but we're not there yet, so at this point in time, I'm going to defer.
Okay.
So this budget proviso does not lock you into that date?
Well, if nothing else, it's probably just a statement that I continue to be opposed to this particular measure.
And this, well, just so I'm clear what the scope of this item is, it's all, I want to say 100 to 150 operating items that we reviewed individually in that spreadsheet?
It is one of many, many adjustments that are being made to this budget, yes.
So if each of us were to, you know, hinge our support on one of those operating items, there would probably never be a budget passed at the county level. Is that fair a statement?
I would say that, yes, that is.
Because I would, I can't imagine you'd ever have unanimity on 100-plus items.
There were many diverse views on each of the items that we reviewed. There were many that had a unanimous support, but many that had a divided vote.
I'm just pointing this out because I am certain that there were items in there that I voted, I was outvoted two to one on, but I'm going to go ahead and support this. To clarify, my previous nay vote, which I didn't get to do, that was a little different because that was about creating new positions, a whole bundle of which I opposed as being something that the county couldn't afford. The budget, the budget items that you approve, as we go through a biennial budget, a lot of them swell because of cost increase, or they were structured to swell because, you know, our IT department, you make a decision, you're going to hire in the future. So I felt that every single position that wasn't in that category of an automatic swell, we really didn't have the financial capacity. So, and I struggled over whether I should even, you know, oppose that item because there were several of those positions that I did support. So again, it's kind of a fine line, but I just wanted to point out that there's, I see it as a difference, but I wanted people to understand why I might make that comment about the operating budget, which is really huge, versus the position control and the position I took there.
Yeah, the operating budget is what just the general fund is all the funds they use for operations, by operations, by to conduct the county business. But also, following up on your comment, Commissioner Minzer, when the board went through each of those items, I believe Commissioner Edwards was very clear, and your vote was recorded, that you were not in support of this particular item at that time. But again, ideally, we'll have, we'll have the full board supporting this large operating budget for the county, which is, which is in the millions of dollars. But I understand the, the positions, I understand the democracy aspect of the vote itself.
I'll move to adopt the 2019-2020 capital budget midterm adjustments under items.
Operating.
Best operating, 3G.
Sorry, I'm on the wrong item. Retract that. I move to adopt the 2019-2020 operating budget midterm adjustments.
Has to second that. So it's been moved and seconded to adopt the 2019-2020 operating budget midterm adjustments. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries. H?
H is the motion to approve the capital midterm budget adjustments in accordance with best practices in governmental budgeting. We separate the capital budget from the operating budget. The capital improvement plan and the transportation improvement plan are aligned with this budget in 2020, and so you have funded the projects in the immediate year and in 2019. And then in the out years, we have that money planned out, but this is the capital budget amendments that go with this part of the budget.
Okay, any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the 2019-2020 capital budget midterm adjustments.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the 2019-2020 capital budget midterm adjustments. Any discussion on that?
No.
Nope, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you.
Item I is the establishment of a fund for parks. State law requires that the Board of County Commissioners approve the establishment of any specific fund. Currently, parks is organizationally housed in Public Works, which is wonderful. However, the accounting for parks' operations is part of the road fund, and the road fund is a massive fund. It is difficult to see exactly what those transactions are related to parks. So in the interest of transparency and to make accounting easier, we are proposing a separate fund specifically for parks and trails, and that's what this motion would do.
Okay, any questions?
No, sir.
All right, is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the 2019-2020 midterm budget adjustments in establishing a separate parks fund.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the 19 and 20 midterm budget adjustments in establishing a separate park fund. Any discussion on that?
No, sir.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you.
So my final item is J, and that is requesting that you set a public hearing on the revenue sources that support the budget. RCW 8455120 requires counties to hold a public hearing on the possible property tax increases and to review all other revenue sources that support the budget. This public hearing comes after you've set your budget, but is prior to the request to have the taxes levied. And by RCW 8452070, you are required to certify the levy to the assessor no later than November 30th. So we are requesting that you hold the public hearing on revenues to support the budget on November 26th at 3:00, or as soon thereafter as is possible, already in the motion, right here in room 280 of this building, as required by state law.
All right, questions?
Maybe we went over this, but it's escaping me right now. I guess, why are we waiving the 20-day notice now, and we've got 21 days to go until the hearing date? So is it some kind of a formality that?
It is determined that which we need to send out to the newspaper, and it can only, the newspaper can wait a certain period of time, and we're off of that.
Okay. I remember that discussion at another time, then.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to waive the 20-day legal notice requirement and set a public hearing for November 26th, 2019, at 3:00 p.m., or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard in room 280, Building 1 of the Thurston County Courthouse, on revenue sources for the 2019-2020 budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to waive the 20-day legal notice requirement and set a public hearing for the revenue sources for the 2019-2020 budget. Any discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. This item for your consideration is for you to set a public hearing for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019, at 3:00 p.m. or soon thereafter as the matter may be heard in this building, room 280, for you to receive public testimony related to proposed changes to the Thurston County Code. One is adding a new chapter, 2.130, to Title II, again, to the Thurston County Code. This is relating to the public records disclosure, adding section 2.130.010, that is related to the designation of a public records officer and public records coordinator, and adding section 2.130.020 of the Thurston County Code, again, related to the review of denials of public records. And also, we're planning with this proposal to recodifying section 2.02.050 of the Thurston County Code, which is the current public records part of the code. You review this item. Karen Herwitz, the public records attorney, was here this morning. You had a couple of questions. She will follow up with those answers at a later date, and I recommend for you to consider setting a public hearing on this matter for December 3rd, 2019.
All right, any questions?
I guess, this is a technical issue in which we are trying to meet some requirements of the law, and we've fallen short. Sometime back, we missed something around 2006 or?
Now, the public records law has changed in the past, and we're trying to consolidate all the different laws into, into a single county code, and that is the intent, is just to, everything aligned to the, to the state law, if that's what you're referring to.
And the end result will be that we will become more efficient in responding to citizen requests for information and less exposure to liability possibly.
That could be the, the end result, and also will, will provide more clarity as to how the county code is addressing the public records law.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, Commissioner?
No.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to set a public hearing for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019, at 3:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard in Building 1, in room 280 of the Thurston County Courthouse, to accept public testimony on proposed revisions to the Thurston County Code, adding section 2.130.010 relating to designation of a public records officer and public records coordinators, adding section 2.130.020 relating to review of denials of public records, and recodifying section 2.02.050.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to set a public hearing related to a new chapter, 2.130, the public records disclosure to the Thurston County Code. Any discussion?
No, sir.
All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, L?
Thank you again, Commissioners. For your consideration, it's for you to consider taking an action on changes to Thurston County Code, Chapter 2.118. Chapter 2.118 is, is related to RCW 36.17024, which establishes the authority for you, the county commissioners, to establish a county salary commission in Thurston County. The proposal included some revisions, and you held a public hearing on October 29th, 2019, where you received one public testimony from Mr. Pettit, where he provided no support of the proposed changes. This morning, after the public hearing, you had a conversation and implemented revisions to the proposed ordinance. And, and the revisions, I'm going to just read you as follows. Under Chapter 2.118020, rules and regulations, item A, you, the proposal changes the, the reference to the Chapter 42.42 of the RCW, and it will change to 42.30.035. That is again, to try to align the code to the new state law. Also, on the same chapter, item B, you, the proposal includes deleting the last portion of that item, which I'm going to read what is the proposed deletion. It is provided, however, that the final action to set or recommend any salary provision of this to section 2.118020 shall require an affirmative vote for not less than six members. That portion is proposed to be deleted. And the portion remainder states as follows. "A majority appointed members shall constitute a quorum for the purpose of conducting meetings. To take action at a meeting, an affirmative vote of not less than 60% of those present is required," period. And those are the changes related to this particular item before you.
All right, any questions or comments?
I would just point out that if citizens are concerned and they participate in this commission, if there's 10, then this, these changes will never come into being because there'd be 10 members, they'd have to have six votes, which was consistent with the previous, the previous scheme, and there'd be no change to the way the process would work. These changes only kick into effect if we have not been able to fill the spots, or as the current case, we have that plus a situation where appointed members are not participating. And this is just designed to, without eliminating the supermajority requirement, it's designed to not allow nonparticipation of appointed members to hamstring, completely disable the, the commission.
Well put. Questions or comment?
I guess in, in consideration of comments that have been made to this board requiring that supermajority, I think this is about as good a compromise as we could get to come up with what Commissioner Minzer did come up with on the 60%, because it, it can actually be more than 60%, but never less than 60%. So I think it fits in the mix pretty well, considering the history of appointments to the salary commission, so I'm prepared to make a motion.
And I thank you for making that, that suggestion. Thank you very much. Go ahead. Did you have anything more?
Nope.
Okay. Go ahead.
I would move to adopt an ordinance to amend Thurston County Code, Chapter 2.118.080, Citizens Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt an ordinance to amend Thurston County Code, Chapter 2.118.080, Citizens Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Nope?
No.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now's the time where we would report on our board and committee work. I'll start with you, Commissioner Minzer, if you have anything.
Well, I know we're running short on time, so I'm going to, there's some really important things I wanted to report on, so I'm going to reserve the right next week to make an extra-long report to include some of the things here. The only thing that I will hit on today is that I encourage, we have a, we have a river gauge, flood warning system. I'm the representative on the Chehalis River Basin Flood Authority. If you go to chehalisriverflood.com, you can get these alerts. We have a friendly wager between the Commissioners of Grays Harbor, Lewis, and Thurston County, who can get the most new signups for this system between November 1st and December 31st? I would like to not be embarrassed and get as many Thurston County folks signed up as possible, so chehalisriverflood.com, you can get, you can sign up for the particular gauge for the particular river. You don't have to get the whole system, systemic Chehalis Basin warning. You can focus on the river that's closest to you and your home or your, or your loved ones.
Well, you made a wager, so what's the, the competition?
I think the two losers have to take the winner to lunch, or something like that.
Or wear a different tie.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Edwards?
Well, I guess, rather than talk about things that, that I worked on this week, I'll keep it short, but I would like to put a plug in for the Future Farmers of America. The Yelm chapter has a very active chapter of Future Farmers of America, and there are 700,000 members. And we had one of our Yelm FFA members win a first-place position out of all of those potential applicants. And you've often heard me say that kids are 30% of our population, but 100% of our future. And I would like to point out and congratulate that young person, Abby Dorhauer, and her parents, Sherry and Jay Dorhauer, that led them, led her. parents, Sherry and Jay Dorhauer, that led them, led her to reach this achievement, which was really something to see. I know everybody doesn't follow that, but what it had to do was its leadership development. And to attain that position in a national setting like that, and I think her marketing scheme, if you will, was for the Washington farm year old, to promote agriculture in the state of Washington. And Matt Mounts was her advisor, and I can't say how proud I am, and I think this reaffirms my thoughts that we really need to pay attention and do what we can for our youth, because they are 100% of our future as we move on. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to recognize that accomplishment and the success out there of that program of bringing our young people up to be our future leaders.
Thank you.
I'll let it go down.
I'll just report on one thing. I attended this afternoon the Behavioral Health Resources Phoenix Award, the annual Phoenix Awards, where young men and women who have suffered either substance abuse or suffer with mental illness have risen from the ashes and have recovered their life, license, job, skills, family. And as they, there was like eight, seven, or eight awards or more, and it was very uplifting, and they all described it, that getting back through the therapy and receiving hand up, a hand up from our resources, even the homeless folks that have come around, said it's just life-altering. So it was a very uplifting event, and I've done this for a few years, and it's a great event to support. Thank you. Now, County Manager.
Briefly, Commissioners, let me walk you through your upcoming combined schedule for next, this coming week. Soon thereafter, you will hold a public hearing where you receive public testimony related to proposed changes to Thurston County Code, Chapter 1, 5.06. Wednesday, November 6th, tomorrow, at 11:15, you have the opportunity to welcome new employees to Thurston County Government. 2:30 in the afternoon tomorrow, Wednesday, November 6th, you have a briefing related to the Development Code Docket Amendment Number A17. That will be a plot extension. At 5:30 in the afternoon tomorrow, November 6th, you have been invited to participate in Steve Hall's retirement reception. Steve Hall is retiring as the city manager for the City of Olympia, and this reception will be held at the Olympia City Hall. Thursday, November 7th, you have a briefing and in the morning related to the budget amendments for the 2019 year. And attend, you have your regular Commissioners check-in. An agenda will be published 24 hours in advance. Moving on to Monday, November 11th, county offices are closed in observance to the Veterans' Day holiday. And you will come back here on Tuesday, November 12th. We will be reviewing the agenda for that day, and in the afternoon, you will have your regular Board of County Commissioners meeting. Do it a little bit again. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. And what we're going to do now is we are going to take a recess, and out of respect for staff, we're going to take a five, okay, six-minute recess. Six minutes, and then we'll reconvene for our public hearing. Thank you. Welcome back. We're still in session now, reconvening for a public hearing. Still November 5th, 2019. It's 4:17 in the afternoon. This public hearing is to consider updates to Chapter 15.06 of Thurston County Code related to storm and surface water utility rates. The Thurston County Storm and Surface Water Utility was created by the Board of County Commissioners in 1985 to address localized flooding and erosion caused by increasing development activities. The rates and fees structured was codified in Thurston County Code 15.06, and has experienced numerous modifications since its original passage. It was determined language within the code could be construed as sunsetting, the SSWU, that's the Storm and Surface Water Utility, in 2019. Staff conducted a review of the existing chapter to determine proposed updates which would eliminate this ambiguity. As part of this review process, staff also identified other opportunities for clarification and realignment of the chapter with the original intent of the SSWU. These changes would clarify the SSWU rates, extend beyond 2019, provide clarity in language and equity amongst storm water rate payers. So there is a sign-up sheet up in the back, and I have it here, but there's plenty more. If anybody else wants to come in, if they sign in, that's fine. If you wish to testify, you'll have three minutes to testify. I'll be calling out the names for oral testimony. When you hear your name, please come forward. Identify yourself and where you live in the county. Time may not be given to another person. The Clerk of the Board, Labunida Bulmar, has the timer. Timer's going to be set up here for three minutes. And so, again, this is a public hearing to consider updates to Chapter 15.06 of Thurston County Code related to the Thurston County Storm and Surface Water Utility Rates. And now, the public hearing is now open. I'm going to ask Zainab Najati to please come up and give us an update. She is our utility planner, and she'll give us background information. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. As Commissioner Hutchings stated, county staff were tasked with providing in Thurston County Code, Chapter 1506, regarding storm and surface water utility rates to eliminate the possible interpretation that the stormwater utilities authority to collect stormwater rates and charges would sunset at the end of 2019. In conducting those revisions, we thought it was a good time to conduct a holistic review of the entire chapter and make sure that the current code was clear and met the original intent of the founding resolution. Since the founding resolution, Resolution 8069, Chapter 1506 has been updated six times. Many of those updates altered small sections of the code without taking a look at the code as a whole. These proposed changes were presented to the Board of County Commissioners on August 27th, and again on September 10th, and then on October 15th, the Board made a motion to set this public hearing, and that notice of the public hearing was published in the Olympia Newspaper on October 16th and October 23rd. These proposed updates have been reviewed and approved by the Prosecuting Attorney's Office and are in alignment with the County Strategic Plan and Initiative 8 to support robust and well-maintained infrastructure systems for a thriving community. To date, we have received no public comments regarding these proposed updates.
Okay. Any questions of Zainab?
No.
Do you have any questions or comments?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. So I'm going to call the folks that have signed up on the roster here. There's apparently only two, so we'll start with Doug Carmen, followed by Eric Casino.
Thank you, Commissioners. Doug Carmen.
Up time. And now you don't have to introduce yourself. Don't waste your time and do that. Go ahead, Doug. Thank you.
I'm also the Chair of the Long Lake Management District, and I just wanted to come forward. You don't always get people to come forward and say they're in favor of something, but I think they've done a good job of updating this. But they've also added a section under the Lake Management District and Drainage District Rate Reduction, which you may know, people who belong to a lake management district get a rate reduction due to what they do for the lake. But in the past, there's been no requirement for us to say what we do. And so they have added those requirements so that now we have to be actively engaged. We can't just be there, and we have to write up a document each year that says what we do. So I think they've done a good job of updating this ordinance, and it's not overly burdensome for us, and so thank you very much.
There's your pat on the back.
Pat on their back.
Next is Eric Casino.
Thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to come and say that I also do support these changes to 1506. Currently, I serve on the Surface Stormwater Advisory Board and on the Lake Management District Steering Committee, and we've looked at these changes, and I think from both perspectives, and also that of a rate payer, everything in here is not only appropriate but reasonable, and I think that it's something you guys should approve, and I think that the rest of the community would benefit from it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Who's your employer, Eric?
What's that?
Who's your employer?
I'm retired.
Okay.
Wow. All right. Now, is there anybody else here that would love to address the board that hasn't signed up? Anyone? Anyone? Or anybody else here? It's fine, and I'm going to close this public hearing. Now, I asked the Board, what is the pleasure of the Board?
Could I ask the County Manager?
Certainly. No, no, I was pointing to your sheet.
No, yeah. I just want to ask the County Manager something. Did we ever get this fixed, where there was notification to those few property owners that lived along, I guess, abandoned roads where developments were put in years ago, and they were going to be notified that the amount of ground in that roadway attached to their lot was going to be attached to their tax bill? Did that ever happen?
I guess that was not, since you have not taken an affirmative action on this, if that's what you're asking.
But if we take an affirmative action, it's just a done deal, isn't that right?
Obviously, yeah.
Yeah.
So you just want to just close the public hearing, then?
I would close the public hearing, I guess, and then maybe if we could have additional discussion. Are we up against a timeframe here?
Hopefully, you take an action on this before the end of the year, because the purpose of this change is to clarify the fees do not lapse at the end of 2019. So that is a critical time that you need to consider taking an action.
So you're saying that discussion about those abandoned roads, that was part of this, one of these changes? This was a grab bag of different pieces?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I got you. I remember that.
I was just wondering if any of them were ever notified that this was taking place. I mean, I know they were notified that there was going to be a public hearing if they happened to see the notice, read the paper, that kind of thing, but I don't know how many people it's going to affect. I think it's 100. I think it's 100 or 200, you know, it's relatively small number in the scheme of things. But I, so I have a few additional questions to ask. So how about if I?
Add a later date?
Yeah, add a later date. How's that? I would move to close this public hearing.
Second?
I guess, yeah, just close it. It's closed. That's done. Thank you.
And. I'm just not quite there yet, so.
Oh, that's okay, but do you want another one?
I mean, I don't have a, I mean, I'm happy to let you have additional time if we have it. I'd like to.
I want to get this done, but I'd like to know the answer to that, a couple of things.
So are you asking the question whether those individuals affected by portions of this proposal have been notified prior to the public hearing?
Yeah.
Perhaps the answer is no.
The answer is no.
So whether we're going to be notifying them at this point, and then for you to reconsider whether you'd like to enact on these changes based on their perspective, that's a different conversation.
My concern is that we're going to take an action, and they're going to feel they never had any input into it.
But even if we were to, Zainab, do you have something to add? Back up to the podium. Thank you, ma'am.
So I will say that we have had some internal discussions that in advance of sending them these, their bills, those property owners would get a notification of the change, so they wouldn't just suddenly see it.
Yes, I mean, they would get a notification of the change once we make the change.
After the fact, yes.
Yeah, in fact, and that in itself concerns me, that's all.
However, they have had advanced notice of this meeting, and it's been publicized, and it's been advertised?
Yeah.
Okay, it's been advertised.
They have made the legal requirements of the public notice for this public hearing.
Right, so if we were to go out and try to contact 100 or 200 people and then get feedback, we're not going to clearly get this done by the end of the year.
Yeah, okay. I see that, too.
That's my thought. That's my thought.
That makes sense, but I guess government making legislation isn't always pretty to watch have it be made, I guess.
So is there a motion?
No, I'm not prepared to make a motion.
Are you prepared to make a motion?
I think I am. I'll move to adopt ordinance to amend Thurston County Code, Chapter 15.06, Storm and Surface Water Utility Rates.
And I second that motion, so it's moved and seconded to adopt the Thurston County Code, Chapter 15.06, SSWU rates. All, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Zainab. Thank you. Now we're going to move into, we need time to set up for Board of Health.
You need to adjourn this meeting.
Yeah, we adjourn. We adjourn. Welcome, good evening, and welcome to the Board of Health, Thurston County Board of Health for Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair, Commissioner Ty Mensah. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards, and the far right is Lady Hodgkinson, our clerk of the board. To her right is PHSS, Public Health and Social Services Director, Shelley Slaughter. To her right is our County Health Officer, Dr. Rachel Wood, and to her right is County Manager, Romero Chavez. So, calling the meeting to order and is there an approval for the agenda?
I move to approve today's agenda dated November 5th, 2019.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve this evening's agenda. Any discussion or amendments or changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
No.
Nope, okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. And the meeting minutes?
Move to approve meeting minutes from September 10th, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes from September 10th, 2019. Any changes or alterations to that, to the minutes?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. That takes us to item number two on the agenda, and that's proclamations, and this is November and Movember. Shelley?
Good evening, Commissioners. I am here to ask the Board of Health to proclaim November as Movember to increase the public understanding of the importance of men's health and urge all members of our community to recognize this significant occasion and join the movement to change the face of men's health. Just to tell you a little bit about Movember and what it means, Movember is an annual event involving the growing of mustaches during the months of November to raise awareness of men's health issues such as prostate cancer, testicular cancer, and men's suicide. I want to congratulate all of the men here for your efforts in growing a mustache in honor of this occasion.
This is one year old.
For joining the movement. So the goal of Movember is to change the face of men's health. This movement was started many years ago in Australia, so it's an international movement that has spread to the United States, and Thurston County has observed this for many years, and we're really proud of that. This encourages men, also known as Mo-bros, to get involved. Movember aims to increase early cancer detection, diagnosis, and effective treatments, and ultimately reduce the number of preventable deaths. Besides annual checkups, the Movember Foundation encourages men to be aware of family history of cancer and to adopt healthier lifestyles. Oftentimes, men suffer in silence, and this event encourages men and those who love them to talk about important men's health issues. Just to highlight a couple of the national statistics, one man dies by suicide every minute of every day in the United States. One in nine men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer, and testicular cancer is the most common cancer in young men. So today we have with us representatives from the American Cancer Society, Nicole Woolsey and Marlin Kraft, who will be here to talk more about this important movement and what people can do to protect themselves and prevent men's cancer and promote men's health.
Thank you. I appreciate the invitation today, and I'm very proud to be here and be a part of this with my friend, Marlin. My name is Nicole Woolsey, and I'm a Senior Community Development Manager with the American Cancer Society. My area that I cover is all of Thurston County. I'm also a 33-year, I'm older than 33, 33-year resident of Thurston County, raising two children here, one being a young man who's 23 today, actually. I think coming from that aspect, because I wonder, what will I talk about today? And I have two things really that I want to focus on, and one is, I do have a young man, that's my son, who lives here. And a few things that I think as a mother, I really want to focus on raising my children to not be ashamed when they need to talk about something. And there is screening available that saves lives, and sometimes that screening might be uncomfortable or cause some discomfort, but it is available and it does save lives. So anybody watching this out there today, I would encourage you to look up and to talk to your doctors and encourage your children to talk to their doctors, pay attention to your body and be an advocate, see when you need to get screening, what screening is available, and what do you need to do to be able to go through that screening? And that might be a colonoscopy. And a lot of people don't want to go get it because it's uncomfortable, but the thing is, colonoscopies do save lives, sometimes right then and there, taking away potential cancer. But talking to, the most common cancers in men are prostate, colorectal, lung, and skin. Skin being the number one diagnosed cancer in America, and prostate being the second in men. So what can you do? Please have those conversations. And you know, I work for the American Cancer Society, but even on the level of the suicide rates, talk to people. It's okay to talk, and it's okay to be vulnerable. But I am very proud to introduce, actually, my friend, Marlin Kraft, because he's a two-year, or a two-time cancer survivor and a volunteer with the American Cancer Society, and I'm going to let him tell the story.
Thank you, Nicole.
In the summer of 2008, I noticed a very small lump below my right armpit. I knew it hadn't been there before, so I immediately made an appointment with my doctor to have it looked at. He wasn't sure what it was, but he said it was probably just a cyst, suggested I keep an eye on it. Well, five months later, I started to feel it getting larger, so I asked the doctor to check it again during my annual physical, and he agreed to do an ultrasound on it. After we did all the other tests for the annual physical, I realized there was no mention of the ultrasound, so I had to call back the office, force them to get it scheduled. Well, weeks later, when I finally had the procedure done, right away I knew there was a problem. The supervisor said, I need to step in and take over. That was a red alarm going off. Afterwards, I met with a nurse navigator who informed me that I needed to have a biopsy. Then, on January 20th, 2009, which was, by the way, inauguration day, my wife and I met with a new doctor who informed us that I had breast cancer. I was stunned. I didn't remember hardly anything other than when I heard the word carcinoma. The medical staff suggested I have a general surgeon perform a mastectomy in about three weeks. My wife, who then worked with a group of surgeons, was not happy. She took my diagnosis back to her office and showed it to a breast cancer surgeon. She said, that has to come out, and it's got to come out right away. That same surgeon ended up delaying her vacation for a few hours so she could perform a mastectomy just two days after I was diagnosed. I mean, she moved mountains to get it done. The diagnosis was stage 2A invasive ductal carcinoma with a second smaller tumor attached to my chest muscle, plus three lymph nodes positive for cancer in my arm. It was fairly aggressive, but I had caught it early. My treatment was what I call the whole meal deal. First, I had mastectomy, which took a while to recover from. Next, 10 sessions of chemo, which was some really nasty stuff. I was supposed to have a total of 16 sessions, but I ended up with neuropathy in my feet, so my oncologist stopped at 10. After a short break, I went through 30 radiation treatments. And then finally, I went through five and a half years of Tamoxifen and Lupron treatments, which is quite experience for a guy. I ended up with mood swings, hot flashes, and night sweats. Two years after all that, my new doctor noticed my PSA was slightly above normal. He referred me to a urologist, even though I had no symptoms at all. First thing neurologist says, I'm not sure what it is, but I'm sure it's not cancer. Well, he scheduled a biopsy, and again, the biopsy showed cancer. This time, it was stage 3, and pretty aggressive. This narrowed my options, so I had an open prostatectomy, which took a long time to recover from. from. My oncologist determined I didn't need any radiation treatments, again, as long as my PSA stayed above one, or I'm sorry, below one. Cancer is not just a sickness or disease you have and then get over. For most people, it's a lifelong journey. It's as life-changing as having children. I often refer to the time before my oldest son's birth as BC, before children. And the time since then is AC, after children. Remember the life you had before you had children? Now, you contrast that with your life since, it's quite a change. Cancer is every bit as life-changing. I also reference my time now before getting cancer as BC. And of course, everything since then is now AC. Most cancer patients suffer debilitating after-effects for the rest of their lives. I personally will always have the effects of urinary issues and ED due to the prostate cancer. Because of the breast cancer, I will have a lifetime of dealing with lymphedema in my right arm due to having 13 lymph nodes removed. I regularly have muscle spasms in my chest and my right armpit is completely numb. I have a reduced range of motion in my right shoulder, multiple skin problems due to the radiation, and worsening neuropathy in my feet. And I'm one of the fortunate ones, as I caught both my cancers fairly early. Many survivors have much worse issues to deal with daily and that's not even counting the internal organ damage that is common. I bring this up to point out how crucial early detection, prevention, and overall awareness of our bodies is to detecting any possibility of cancer before it gets a hold of us. So, much can be done in early stages now, so don't wait or think it couldn't happen to you. Male breast cancer itself carries a real stigma, which causes many men to avoid seeking treatment or even talking about it to their doctors. As a result, almost all men are diagnosed at a later stage than most women are. One of the problems is, most men will wait until they are in pain or the cancer breaks through their skin before seeking treatment. This year, around 2,600 men will get breast cancer and about 500 will die from it. Normally, 1 in 1,000 men get it, one man for every 100 women. African-American males is one man for every 70 women. So, there's a real disparity there. My challenge to each of you is to help spread the word and be an advocate for all the men in your life. Remember, they already avoid doctors, so they need others to be aware for them. Finally, use sunscreen. Get your colonoscopies on time. Get your mammograms yearly, I know I do. Quit smoking while you can, get a checkup yearly, and be aware of any changes in your body. The earlier you can catch a problem, greatly increases your chance of surviving it. Thank you and always be aware.
Wow. Wow. Thank you, Marlin. Any questions or comments? From you?
Nope, you're going to make me cry and I ain't going to do it.
I'll just, I'll reiterate, I'll back you up on what you said, Marlin, that not only having cancer is life-changing, life-altering, but just the point you're hearing at that moment, the doc says you have cancer is a significant emotional experience. So, good for you and thank you for all that you're doing. Thank you very much and thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
So, we have a...
Proclamation.
Proclamation, there's the word.
Whereas worldwide, men die in average, worldwide, men die an average of six years younger than women and in Thurston County, three years younger than women. And whereas these deaths are largely preventable by taking action to live healthier, happier, and longer lives. And whereas in Thurston County last year, 43 men died by suicide, 70% of all suicide deaths are men and the suicide rate for men is higher compared to women. And whereas 28% of Thurston County men do not have adequate social support, support to speak up and speak out should not be a stigma and reaching out is crucial. And whereas the top two leading causes of death for men in Thurston County are cancer and heart disease. And whereas out of every 100 men, 13 will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in their lifetime and the average age for being diagnosed with testicular cancer is 33. And whereas in Thurston County, only 23% of adult men are at a healthy weight and 40% of men are not physically active enough or are inactive. And whereas moving can reduce your risk of heart disease, diabetes, and cancer by up to 50% and lower your risk of early death by up to 30%. And whereas, in order to spark conversations and raise vital funds and awareness for mental, for men's health, Thurston County joins communities across our nation in challenging men to grow a mustache or make a commitment to get active and move and encourages women to support these efforts. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Health proclaims, hereby proclaims November as Movember in Thurston County and encourages all residents to increase public understanding of the importance of men's health and urges all members of our community to recognize this significant occasion and join the movement to change the face of men's health. Adopted this 5th day of November, 2019, Thurston County Board of Health.
Yeah. Good job. Now, we have... Proclamation to hand out. Nicole, Marlin.
Nicole won't even stand by me, it looks like.
You know, today's only November 5th and you have a heck of a beard. Man. Come on in, come on in. Okay. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you so much. Thank you, Marlin.
Thank you. You weren't going to make me cry today.
Yeah.
Good job, Marlin. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. That takes us to item number three on the agenda, which is the opportunity for the public to address the board. And I don't know if there's any sign up, if anybody has signed up in the back. Does anybody here wish to address the board of County Commissioners? Anyone? Okay, moving on. Department items, number four, first is Grow Smart, Grow Safe Program Overview. Patrick Soderbergh. Hello, Patrick.
Hello. I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to present today. My name is Patrick Soderbergh. I'm one of the hazardous waste specialists for the Environmental Health Department and I'm going to talk today about a project that we have called the Grow Smart, Grow Safe website. And it is a website that is a gardener's guide to purchasing safer pesticide products. And this is an extension of our integrated pest management program that takes a portion of our policy and puts it out onto a website so it helps customers who are purchasing pesticides be able to find safer or less hazardous pesticide products. So, when I first found out about this project, I wondered, as a hazardous waste specialist, our job is typically to steer people away from the use of chemicals and to try to find alternatives to chemical use. And it was after some conversations, it became clear that the goal is to really inform people who are going to use pesticides anyway to make educated decisions about the products that they purchase and to make it easy available for them so that when they go to the stores, they can find products that they can compare to other products around them so that they can choose the safer ones. In the early 80s, the community around here had a lot of issues regarding the county's use of pesticides and they came in and they wanted the county to implement or create a policy that would help make decisions about our use of pesticides and the types of pesticides we use. And with that became the development of the first integrated pest management policy back in, as early as 1989. It's been revised in 91 and again in 2014. And through the process of the development of this, you can see Section 9 is highlighted there, which involves the evaluation of pesticide products by the Environmental Health Department so that the commissioners can make decisions about how different departments in the county utilize pesticides and which ones are the safest to use for the applications that they propose to use. So, with this being in the policy, it created a mechanism for the Environmental Health Department to create a system to review pesticide active ingredients and kind of put them on a scale where you can compare one to another. The information that is to be looked at is to basically create a system where we can use the least toxic available when they're effective. And I'm not going to read all these, but the, the policy states exactly what is to be reviewed and it's very extensive. It has to do with how, how those ingredients or those chemicals move in our environment, how long they persist in our environment, how they can adversely affect non-target organisms and the applicator and/or just the public who interacts with those. And based on all of that information that we're to review, it's based on best professional judgment. So, with that, we created a system that is very extensive. I can't even put all three pages on this and have it legible. We look at literally the chemical and how it breaks down in the environment, where it can go, what receptors can contact it, and how those exposures might affect any non-target organisms. So, with that, the Grow Smart, Grow Safe takes all of those active ingredient reviews and it couples them with the products that are registered for the state of, in the state of Washington for homeowners to use. And we work with the Washington State University as well as the Washington State Department of Agriculture so that we get all of the pesticides that are registered for use in the state of Washington for homeowners. So, you won't find any commercial products in here, you'll only find the products that are available for homeowners to use and at their homes and on their properties. And we do that so that the Master Gardeners Program can utilize this as a resource. So, when you go to a Washington State Cooperative Extension Office with a plant or an insect and they help you identify it and tell you what can be used for control, they can use this website to go and compare the different active ingredients that would work and then tell you which ones would be the least hazardous for your application at your site. And that's what we really encourage people to do, is to work with those master gardeners and the cooperative extensions to get a professional guidance on, you know, accurately identifying pest problems and then having a course of action to control them that is least hazardous. I know we don't have a lot of time, this is one of the pages, if you would go, I'm going to go back a second. And you can see the tabs where it says animal pests, diseases, insects, moss, slug and snails, snails and weeds. And you can click on those and it'll bring you to natural controls or chemical controls. And if you choose chemical controls, you'll get to a page like this where on the left side, you can, you can, depending on if you know what you want to control, you can select that and it'll bring up all the products that are registered in the state that control that and they are ranked. The lowest hazardous products are listed on top and they become increasingly more toxic or more hazardous as you go to the bottom. And so, that's how the website is used and you can find all different types of products. You can find natural controls because we highly encourage people to not use chemicals if they can be effective without chemical controls. A month ago, and I'm sorry, this is way too small to read, but what I'm trying to demonstrate is, I, about a month ago, I looked on the website and just Googled GrowSmartGrowSafe.org to see where it was, who's using it, who's linking to it. And on the right-hand side, there's over 32 different agencies across the country that directly link to that website. There's foundational programs, including NASA, who has done research on alternative methods or to incorporate into their pest control and they recommend incorporating Grow Smart, Grow Safe into that decision matrix. And there's a lot of cities in Washington, Oregon, there's background habitat certification programs in Oregon that utilize Grow Smart, Grow Safe to differentiate between their gold, silver, and platinum tier backyard certifications. So, it's being used all around the world with very little resources from Thurston County being put into it and almost no advertising for it at all. And we get thousands of hits on this website every single month. And we've been, originally, this product came out of King County and we were partners with them and Portland Metro, so it has kind of a regional system throughout it and that's why it's very well-used throughout, you know, from Portland up through King County. And the address is www.GrowSmartGrowSafe.org and hopefully you can see my contact information up there if anybody has any questions about it and my contact information is also on the website when you go there.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments?
You know, are they coming up with any solutions by any chance on pollinators? I know the honeybees are stressed out. There's a researcher out at Evergreen that came up with something about they get a certain droplet off of a mushroom and that controls something. I mean, pollinators are just a concern of mine overall, is all.
Yes, absolutely. And Thurston County took steps to, when neonicotid pesticides, they are thought to, to support the decline or contribute to the decline of bee colonies and because of that, about, in, I believe it was 2014 when, when the county updated the policy, their IP, or Integrated Pest Management Policy, one of the things that was included was a, no neonicotids will be used by Thurston County departments or on our properties by any contractors that we utilize. So, the county has made steps towards trying to protect pollinators, but I know that there's a lot of research out there to try to find alternatives to a lot of those fungicides and insecticides that get utilized that can affect bees.
Thank you for your work.
Sure.
So, when you say that the chemicals are evaluated, if they're registered for use in the state, is there a level of screening at the, then at the state level, like, like the worst stuff's not on the list because they're not registered for use or, or they just list out every product that's out there?
Well, the, the Washington State Department of Agriculture, it starts with the, the US EPA registers all pesticides for the United States. And then, in the state of Washington, the Washington State Department of Agriculture gets all of those products that want to be registered and they do their own review of them and then they will register independently a subset of what is registered by the EPA.
Okay, so they're screening a little bit and then, and then within, whatever they've approved, then you rank them like, so that people can try to make informed decisions?
That's exactly what happens, yes.
Yes.
Do they follow through by any chance with, okay, you're talking about ones on your list there and they get progressively worse or something as you go down, but pretty soon, that's the last one registered here in Washington. But Idaho's got five more or something that are available. Do you list those as well and say, boy, this is the worst that we allow? There are others out there, but just, you know, you, we want to encourage you to stay completely away from anything from here down and go ahead and list them, I guess, just to let the public know. I can just see somebody picking something up somewhere else and bringing it home and using it here. Do you list those as well and say, boy, this is the worst that we allow? There are others out there, but just, you know, you, we want to encourage you to stay completely away from anything from here down and, and go ahead and list them, I guess, just to let the public know. I can just see somebody picking something up somewhere else and bringing it home and using it here without really knowing, they've just heard from their neighbor that this is a good product or something. Is there any talk about possibly listing the even worse ones than you list and letting people know how bad it is?
Right, so, so one of the things that, so our county website, which I don't have any slides for, so we have a county website for our Integrated Pest Management Program where all of our active ingredient reviews are, are hosted, and those include commercial products. The Grow Smart, Grow Safe specifically does not because then it couldn't be used by the Master Gardeners Program. So, so this is specifically designed to work with Washington State University so that all of the cooperative extension offices can use this as a screen. Thurston County's website does have many more of those more toxic compounds ranked and on our website to inform people specifically about ones that they can't buy in our stores.
I mean, today's day and age of the internet, they can get almost anything over the internet, you know, so.
That's very true.
That's my concern.
Patrick, I'm looking at the, the article that you have a copy of in here, Letter to the Editor in the Olympian from 1984. And I can't read it, and I don't care to read it, but this is about the same era as, and I'll get it wrong probably, Malathion or something they were using to spray caterpillars or gypsy moths or something. Is that something the county was doing back then?
I honestly don't know. I know that the articles that are written, because I've actually been able to see them in a little bit better resolution, they were really more, at that time, it was, it was the roadside spraying of vegetation for just weed control in rights of way. And there was, I believe, a, a big tansy outbreak at that time. And so farmers were, were being informed to control their tansy because cows were being impacted by eating the tansy. And so there, so there was kind of that sort of media coverage of those applications. And, and I think a lot of the, what got written into the letters to the editor were a byproduct of, of that information.
I don't know if it was the state or the county, someone was spraying the stuff in the trees and even in the, in the city of, city limits of Olympia. I knew it wasn't, it was not the county doing that, but I don't know if it was a city issue or statewide, but anyway, yeah, it was about that same time era, nasty stuff being sprayed in the trees to kill this stuff out. Anyway, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
One other thing maybe before you get away, because you're up there close. Do you follow what goes on with the Forest Practice Board, the state of Washington Forest Practice Board?
I do not.
Boy, I think it would be worth you taking a look at all of--
Just, why don't you hook up a meeting?
Yeah.
The two of you, you could brief them on it.
Okay, we don't have a lot of time.
Haven't talked to you about it though.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yes, full, good information about that though, Patrick. Kateri. Sorry, sir. Vaping. And thank you for last week's briefing on that. Very informative. Very informative, very helpful.
So glad. Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Kateri Wimsat, a health educator with the Health Department. I work on substance use prevention, including tobacco and vaping product prevention. And I'm here today to talk with you folks about vaping, why it's a public health issue and some of the things that are, have been going on in the news, give you a little bit of an update on that. So to start off with, very basic, what is vaping? Vaping is the use of an electronic cigarette or a vaping device. Vapes produce an aerosol by heating a liquid, usually containing a drug like nicotine or THC, flavorings and other chemicals that make an aerosol. And people inhale this aerosol when they're vaping into their lungs and bystanders can also breathe the aerosol though when it's exhaled by that person using the vape. So to give you a little bit of background about what are vapor products, there's been several kind of different generations of vapor products on the market through the past decade or so. So starting off, the first ones we saw on the market were, looked similar to a cigarette. They are known as minis or cigalikes. They were often like disposable, ready to use, they're preloaded with nicotine in them. The next version that you'll see on the slide there is a midsize or known as a pen. This is really when they started to get a lot more popular. Another version of that that came out around that time as well is a tank or a MOD. MOD is short for modifiable. They're devices that have a larger battery, as you can see in the photo, and have a lot more liquid. Those are the type of devices that you'll see make really big clouds of aerosol. The next device that came onto the market that has really truly changed the vaping market is a Juul. And a Juul is pictured up there. It looks like a small thumb drive. What Juul, and there's many knockoffs of Juul, so keeping that in mind, Juul does hold the vast majority of the market share for all e-cigarette devices in the United States. But it uses a nicotine salt formation, and what that means is that they have a little tiny pod of very highly concentrated nicotine. And it's that nicotine salt that delivers a higher volume of nicotine more smoothly. And so that faster delivery of nicotine is associated with a more addictive product. In fact, that little tiny pod is the same as one pack of cigarettes or 20 cigarettes. These are the devices that got very, very popular among teens. And if you talk with young people, they'll often talk about Juuling, not, they don't consider Juuling is not necessarily vaping, depending on who you're speaking to. Another type of device for vapor products is the marijuana markets. You can buy preloaded disposable marijuana e-cigarettes from different types of companies. You also can buy THC e-juices that can be used in the same type of vape pens that are used for nicotine e-juices. And then there are also some devices that heat the marijuana leaf or the bud directly rather than burning it. So one of the reasons that this is such an important issue right now is behind me on the slide here with the number of youth that are vaping and the huge increases we've seen in that even in the last two years. So if you look at that chart there, the light blue is 2016 Healthy Youth Survey data. That's data that's done in our schools in sixth, eighth, 10th and 12th grade. And this is Thurston County specific data. And so in 2016, we had about 23% of our 12th graders vaping. That was higher than the state average even at that time, and that was an alarm for us working in this field. And this past year, when they released the 2018 Healthy Youth Survey, that number had jumped to 32%. That's a very large jump and a very concerning jump because we know that young people who use e-cigarettes are at much higher levels than moving on to conventional cigarettes. And we know that tobacco use is the number one cause of preventable death in this country. It kills 480,000 people every year. So this is a very important public health issue. I want to change gears real quick and just talk a little bit about the products themselves. So there's over 500 brands in, selling in the United States, over 7,000 types of flavors. And we really, the level of concern about these products comes from what we really don't know about what's in their ingredients and the regulation and the lack of regulation around them. Up until 2016, there were no federal or state regulations around them. And even for the federal regulations about the ingredients and about the labeling has been pushed off until 2021. So it's been very unregulated as far as what's in a bottle of e-liquid, but we do know that the, there's three main categories of what is in an e-liquid. First, there's a drug, whether it's nicotine or marijuana, THC. Then there's some type of solvent to help break that down. It's typically propylene glycol or regimiglycerin. And then there's flavoring and chemicals and a mix of those. There's also, when you look at the nicotine in that, the nicotine may or may not be what's listed on the bottle. So the FDA did a bunch of testing on different bottles of e-liquid and what was listed on the bottle was not, actually they were much higher. So bottles that were listed as zero had nicotine in them. Another level of concern for public health around this is the vapor itself. So these big aerosol clouds that you see coming out of devices, for many, many years these were marketed as it's just water vapor. And we can now say with certainty, it's not water vapor, it's never been water vapor. We know from testing that in those clouds, there's several different types of elements depending on what is being used in it. But some of the studies have shown that nicotine is in that. Volatile organic compounds, including known carcinogens, things like formaldehyde, heavy metals like nickel, tin and lead, and then also things like ultrafine chemicals. These are all really important because of course, people who are exposed to this vapor are having to breathe in these things and well, and while these are lower than what would be in cigarette smoke, they are still in that era. And concerning, especially for vulnerable populations like children, pregnant women, anyone who has a lung disease or asthma, it's certainly a big deal. Stop for a second and talk about the nicotine in the vapor. Nicotine is a very highly addictive drug. That's what's in cigarettes. And it also is something that reaches your brain very quickly. So when you're talking about the Juul, that actually made a smoother delivery and a quicker way to have that nicotine hit your brain. We know there's no safe level of nicotine for pregnant or breastfeeding women. And we also know that for young people, being exposed while your brain is still forming can really lead you onto a lifelong addiction pathway. And so when we look at the effects of nicotine on health, we know that it leads to dependence and addiction, but we also know that it can impact for young people, learning, memory, attention and behavior. And again, that other real concern is that being exposed to it means it can increase your risk for other drugs. Finally, one of the other issues, particularly around e-juices, is poisonings. And on the slide there, you'll see, what is in, the nicotine that is in e-juices is concentrated and toxic. So part of the reason that this is in a plastic bag is because if it would spill on my hand, it would expose me to that. And people have gotten sick from touching e-juice or specifically with young children from swallowing it. So that lower bar graph there shows that 80% of the calls that the Washington Poison Center has gotten were for children under age five. And that's part of the reason that in 2016, Washington State passed a, a law about safety locks on these types of bottles. So this is an older bottle, but they have similar kind of to a medication now, it's a different type of lid. But you can see that those numbers did grow as the number of exposures, and these numbers are probably small. It's voluntary, of course, to call it the Poison Center, it's not a required or mandated type of reporting. So there's been in the last two years, some comprehensive public health reviews that I think are just really important and worth mentioning. In 2016, the US Surgeon General found that e-cigarettes produce a mixture of harmful chemicals that are known to have adverse health effects and recommended that all governmental bodies at all levels include e-cigarettes in smoke-free indoor air policies as a part of a strategy to reduce e-cigarette use among youth and young adults. And then on top of that, in 2018, we actually had this Blue Report there, which is from the National Academy of Science, Engineering and Medicine. And this, what this group did is these experts came through and looked at all of the evidence, and there's been so many studies in the last 10 years about e-cigarettes, and kind of rated the studies to see what was conclusive, what was substantial evidence but maybe not conclusive, and what had no evidence behind it, and looked at those claims. And a couple of things that came out of that that I think are really important. Number one is it was conclusive that the e-cigarette use indoors increases airborne concentrations of particulate matter and nicotine compared with background levels. So that idea of the vapor just not going away and not being water vapor was conclusively found. Also that e-cigarettes contain and emit numerous potential toxic substances with amounts and characteristics depending on, of course, that device and the type of e-liquid that's being used. So definitely as time goes on, we'll learn more. We don't have 60 or 50 years of evidence like we do with tobacco conventional cigarettes, but we're learning more every day. And because of that, some things have changed around vaping. And one of the big steps that the legislature just recently took in this past session was to pass the Tobacco and Vapor 21 Law. So starting in January, you will have to be 21 to purchase vapor products along with tobacco products in Washington State. Washington joins several other states who have done that. This is a promising strategy that should help prevent young people from smoking and vaping and using tobacco and nicotine products. And according to the Institute of Medicine, this is actually something that we know delays the initiation of tobacco use by young people because oftentimes they get it from social sources who are 18. And at, right now, you have to be 18 to buy cigarettes, so you can get cigarettes from, so by raising that age, what you do is it makes it a little bit harder, which is definitely a good thing. The other thing I wanted just to mention is the recent vaping illnesses or lung injuries that have been going on. They, as of last week, and the CDC will change its numbers tomorrow, they'll do another reporting on it, but there's almost 1,900 cases nationally for what's been known as the e-cigarette or vaping product use associated lung injury or EVOLI for short. Many of those cases include vaping THC, and now it looks like the majority of them do, but there are definitely cases where for people were only vaping nicotine as well. The vast majority of those cases are for people under age 35. And the majority, about 70%, are also male. And those cases have been reported in all states except for Alaska. There've been 12 cases here in Washington State that had been reported, as I said, on Thursdays is when they update their numbers at the CDC. And I know there's been some reports in the news just in the last 24 hours about some cases here in Washington. It's really important, I think, with this being in the news to remind people that there are cessation resources for you. And I, I want to make sure that I mention those. The first of those is the Washington State Department of Health Tobacco Quit Line. That's 1-800-QUIT-NOW. Any person in the state of Washington can call that line. It's available in 11 languages and that person can help you find not only cessation resources that you might automatically have as part of your health insurance, but they also can help folks who are on limited income or other needs. The other is one that has just been released, kind of re-released by the Washington State Department of Health, and that's the Tomorrow Quit App. This app was actually created especially for teens and young adults to quit vaping. This is available on the Washington State Quit Line at DOH.wa.gov/quit. It is also free for users. It's private, it's based on behavior modification, and it's evidence-based to work. Quitting is difficult, but going back to using cigarettes is not a good choice. There's definitely lots of cessation resources out there. Those resources are also available on Thurston County Public Health's website. Finally, the last thing I wanted to update you on was the Washington State Board of Health action that happened October 9th. This was the Board of Health adopted an emergency rulemaking order, and it really did three things. It put 120-day restriction on selling flavored vapor products, both nicotine-based and THC products. Along with that, it required a warning sign in shops regarding this severe lung illness that is going on. And finally, it required the reporting of lung injuries from healthcare providers and facilities to public health for that follow-up. So all of those things have been going on. I know at, at public health, we've been working very diligently in our prevention programs, and that includes the option of considering vaping in public places ordinance. That work is still to come by your direction. But we wanted to make sure that you were updated with all of the things that are going on and happy to take any questions.
Any questions, Commissioner, or comments, anything?
Again, even though that 180-day--
120, yeah.
120-day business, that doesn't apply to any tribal activity, they can still sell everything?
So some tribes have opted out. The P'op tribe, I know for certain, has opted out, but yes, because they are independent nations, they follow their own rulemaking.
And do they have to abide by the age limit either?
Uh, I believe they do not. I don't know locally what our tribes are doing. I certainly will check, can check.
Okay. Rachel?
No, I think you kind of answered it. I had a question about whether or not the intaking of nicotine and THC through vaping creates the same sort of, you know, high effect, like, you know, if you're vaping THC, you get stoned the way someone's smoking marijuana, or if you're smoking and you, whatever that's like, you know, makes you heart rate increase or whatever the physical effects are, it's basically the same as, I think your slide basically said, with nicotine at least, that's true.
And with nicotine, depending on the type of device, like I said, the Juul uses-- And with nicotine, depending on the type of device, like I said, the Juul uses a nicotine salt, so it's even faster than a smoking, a smoking nic, a traditional tobacco cigarette would be.
I was thinking, you know, a lot about THC, because you have an additional component there of intoxication, you know, impairment, whether it's a student at school or someone on the road, or... I mean, how many times do we see a massive cloud of smoke or aerosol coming out of a car window? And, you know...
Yeah.
If that's THC, that if it's delivering the same effects...
Right.
But even more potently, that may be another avenue we have to look at.
I'm not sure. I'll have to actually check about the potency piece of that question for THC, because that really isn't my area of expertise, but I certainly can.
Is it harder to quit vaping if you've been using that product that gives you more nicotine than even a cigarette gives you? Does that just make it that much harder to get away from it when the time comes?
You know, I think that's a really good question. And I think when you're talking about addiction and recovery, everyone's wired a little bit differently. But I would assume, just from the potency aspect, that certainly, when you're using a higher level, it's difficult. And that's why it's so important to remind people that, you know, there are lots of evidence-based and scientifically proven options out there for cessation. And that, you know, the types of things that we have along nicotine replacement therapy and gum, those all went through a very stringent clinical trial to be safe and be put out on the market. And while it is really difficult to quit smoking, millions of Americans have, and it is possible. But every single time you quit, you learn a little bit. And it's difficult. It's a journey, I think, for a lot of people.
When being brewed, I was trying to find an article. Have you heard about the Washingtonian man that was in Oregon that died right after vaping?
I did. That is such a sad case.
I heard that about 5:00 this morning, so I knew I didn't imagine it, but I can't find it.
I actually just read it before I came in today. Yeah, it's very sad.
Cheapers.
Now, I know DEA has put out something about some other drugs showing up in some of these vaping products now.
You can definitely vape a variety of drugs in a vapor device.
But I mean, somebody is intentionally, you know, in marketing. Have you heard any of that yet?
It wouldn't be unsurprising to me. I mean, I know years back, when vapes were new, we had folks reporting vaping alcohol and things like that. That was not good. You know, folks end up in ER that way. And so it's really... But yeah, I have heard of other... There's definitely been other drugs used in a vape.
So I have a question for you, Kateri, and it was, it is who owns Juul?
Juul is owned by Altria, which is a brother company of Philip Morris. So they were purchased a few years ago by that. They started off as an independent company and were purchased, I think, in 2018.
And tobacco, of course, it's the product, tobacco, and then it's infused with other flavorings and additives to make that addictive experience addictive or make it more pleasurable. So there's a handful of chemicals going into a cigarette, but once it is lit and you're inhaling it and exhaling it, it turns into thousands of chemicals. About 70% are carcinogenic. I'm not lecturing you.
No, that's...
It drives me nuts. My last is not a question. It is, it's just a comment, that the state, you said, the Board of Health, State Board of Health, October 19th, just last month, requires reporting of cases of lung injury from healthcare providers. Have they done that with opioids for overdoses?
That's a great question. I don't know, Dr. Wood, if you know that. I don't know.
Is this on?
They've declared that, I mean, they're concerned about lung injury, not death, but they are about death, but this is regarding lung injury. But we're not even required, I don't believe, to report opioid overdoses.
I don't know.
Doctor?
They're still working on that. They... As you know, it's a multifaceted approach for combating the opioid epidemic. So we've got naloxone available for any person who wants it and medication-assisted therapy. But the deaths from opioids, we're looking at it from many different sources, including... Well, Marianne O'Garro is a very competent person that we get to work with, and I've been talking with her about the different sources of information.
The state's been dealing with the opioid epidemic for some time now, and this happened pretty doggone quickly, really.
It did, but if you think about it, I mean, vapes have actually been on the market since 2009, and that many of us were hoping that the FDA would make stricter regulations back in 2016. And so that, the problem with vapes, and especially with young people, didn't just pop up this year. But the lung illnesses, you're exactly right. That did happen very quickly.
Very quickly. I applaud them for that.
The problem is that lungs are a very good... There's a high surface area. You know, if you think of absorbing some kind of chemical into your body, the lungs are perfectly created to do that, right? To exchange oxygen and carbon dioxide. So if you're putting toxic chemicals into your lungs, then you're, you know, it's very efficient distribution.
Yeah, that's very true. Thank you, Kateri. And you have, you actually packed this down and concised it for us or whatever, so thank you.
Welcome.
Abbreviated it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Now we get to the item number six of the agenda, Board of Health members. We talk about our own health-related activities. Commissioner Edwards?
Well, not at our last Board of Health, but at the Board of Health before that, I made a statement to the public because I didn't understand any of this vaping and why they're doing it and all that. And I did have somebody take me up on that offer, and I went out and spent a couple hours and found out a little bit about vaping and why they do it.
Did you like the taste?
No, I didn't even try. What am I supposed to say? An inhale?
Yeah.
But no, I don't have it. I'm not understanding it yet. Nicole, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Marlon.
Thank you, Marlon.
Is that it?
That's it. I mean, I just can't get it in my head, how come they do it.
Commissioner Mansour?
Just a few things. I attended the Thurston Thrives Health Equity Assessment. That was last... Shelley, I'm looking at Shelley. It was last couple weeks ago, late October. And we were basically trying to, as part of our community health assessment, look at it through the lens of equity issues. There's new data that's helping us do that. And then we sort of tried to process that data and think about brainstorm questions and additional data that we might want that would flow from what we were seeing as a kind of a preliminary blush. So that was pretty interesting. With Thurston Thrives, you always get a good broad cross-section of the community. Attended with Commissioner Hutchings, the BHO Integration Forum, which is an effort to reach out to the public and explain what's coming in mental health, you know, the finances of mental health and care delivery next year. And that was a very well-attended event at The Hub in Lacey, a companion to a forum that happened in Shelton the day before. And then opioid task force met yesterday, and I was there to sort of monitor where they're at with their SMART objectives and figuring out how to, you know, put the final pieces in place for the opioid response plan that we approved, the preliminary structure of in June, I want to say, sometime earlier this year.
Great. And for me, you just said it all, so thank you. I have nothing. So that takes us to the Health Officer's Report. Dr. Richard Wood.
So I will keep this brief. I wanted to give you an update on flu activity. It's currently low. There's been one death in an individual older than 80, I mean, yeah, than 80. And just the opportunity to say, you know, please consider flu vaccination and wash your hands, cover your cough, stay home if you're sick. The vaping-associated lung injury, I just wanted to add that that's an evolving investigation. And I'm pleased to say that because of various activities in public health, both locally and at the state level, that medical providers are very aware of that, and that's where our reports are coming from now. It used to be looking back at data to see if you could pick up a syndrome, and now we're getting active reports. And I think I will stop there. But except for one thing, and I might get teary. You know, this is my last Board of Health, and it's been quite an honor and a privilege to serve in this county and to work with all of you. And so thank you for that opportunity. And I think that I, well, the staff that I have deep respect for have left, but yeah, it's, yeah. It's been a really wonderful and part of the pinnacle of my career. So thank you.
You're welcome, doctor. I was going to wait for your report to be done to point that out, that this is very bittersweet, because I'm very happy for you in your retirement, very happy. But it's bitter, because you are adept at what you do, you're cracking smart, and you're a compassionate human being, very compassionate human being. And I wish you the absolute best.
Thank you. I hope to continue my relationship in some form or another in the future, but to be continued.
Thank you very much, doctor, for all that you do.
Yes. Do you have anything to say? Okay.
I just want to follow up and say thank you very much, doctor. At least from my part, it has been nothing but a pleasure to work with you. I really appreciate your perspective, your kindness, and what a wonderful personality you have to do this job. So thank you. Best wishes. Stay in touch.
Here, here.
Thank you.
All right. Now we move to the... Boy, your last report, that's historic now. Wow. We move to the Director's Report. Shelley?
Thank you. And I just wanted to take the opportunity...
Are you on the mic?
Yes, I believe my mic is on. Can you hear?
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, great. I just wanted to add on also, thank you so much, Dr. Wood. It has been such an honor and a privilege to get the chance to work with you over these past few years and share all the sentiments that have been said here. You're one of the most caring and compassionate health professionals and people that I've ever met. And you're beloved by the staff and the community, and Thurston County's been really lucky to have you. And I look forward to continuing to work with you as you continue to stay as a health officer in Lewis County. And so I know we'll cross paths and stay in touch, but thank you. And with that, I also wanted to share that we are having a retirement celebration for Dr. Wood on Monday, November 25th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at our Lily Road location, 412 Lily Road in Olympia, at Public Health and Social Services. And invite anyone that would like to come and wish Dr. Wood well in the future, and thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Can you make it, doc? Okay.
We've confirmed that she will be there.
Okay.
So I'll just, in the interest of time, to share a couple other events that we have coming up. One of the things that I'm really proud to be a part of in our department is our Veterans' Assistance Fund and Support of Services Program, as well as I have the real honor and privilege to be the executive sponsor for our Thurston County Veterans Employee Resource Group. And so with that, I just want to share a message from Mark Moffett, who is our program manager, about and share with you, members of the board, and the public, upcoming event next week in observance of Veterans Day, and that is the annual Veterans Stand Down. So just to tell you a little bit more about that event, in the active military, for those that have served, know that a stand down represents a time for soldiers, airmen, sailors, and marines to take a moment and reflect on their own well-being, to take a breath and ensure that they are safe, healthy, and able to continue the mission. By that same vein, the annual Veterans Stand Down allows us to take a tactical pause and provide needed assistance to our most vulnerable veterans, those that are unemployed and homeless. This event is a partnership between several local, state, and national organizations, and will offer many free services to include haircuts, showers, clothing, military surplus gear, breakfast, lunch, and resume preparation. And it all culminates in the afternoon with a hiring event with dozens of employers with current job vacancies that want to hire veterans. So this event will be held on November 20, or excuse me, November 15th, from 7:30 to 3:30 at the Olympia Armory. That's 515 East Side Street. And for anyone that's watching that wants more information can find that on our website, and we'll also be sharing that on social media.
And that date again?
November 15th.
15th.
Yes.
You used to have one of these in your packet?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then...
Thanks, good.
Yes.
Pleasure.
And then in two weeks, the Washington State Association of Local Public Health Officials will have their annual meeting and conference in partnership with the Washington Association of Counties. And I will be participating in that along with several others from Thurston County. And one of the things that we will do at that annual meeting is discuss the upcoming legislative agenda for WASALFO, of which we are members of. WASALFO, again, Washington State Association of Local Public Health Officials. And I just wanted to share a couple upcoming priorities for the Washington State Legislative Session coming up. And that is, again, this is a draft. This will be finalized, and I'll be sharing more going forward. But at this point, foundational public health, again, you've heard me talk about foundational public health several times over the last couple of years. We were very fortunate to have the legislature support and fund foundational public health this last year. Unfortunately, the revenue source comes from vaping tax, and the forecast is that it will be lower. We will need additional revenue to provide the critical services that only public health can provide. So that's environmental health, emergency preparedness, our infectious disease prevention and investigation efforts, and other foundational important services. So we are going to support WASALFO and Departments of Health request that provide us that revenue to do the work that we do. And also to request additional funds for Group B public water systems that help us provide safe and reliable drinking water in our local communities. And then finally, as you heard from Kateri's report on vaping, we are watching closely the actions that the legislature will take following the Washington State Board of Health temporary ruling and supporting WASALFO's strategies to prevent marketing, sales, and use of tobacco, e-cigarettes, tobacco and marijuana to youth. And also just wanted to note that at that upcoming meeting, there is a session specifically for Boards of Health, chairs and members throughout the county. So encourage you to attend that if you have the opportunity. And I will also be presenting on the efforts of our opioid task force, which Commissioner Mansour shared a little bit about. So a lot of great work happening. Really extremely proud of our amazing staff that we have and the great work that they do every day. And the expertise that you heard is just amazing, and it's respected not only locally across the state, but throughout the country. So great work to our staff, and thank you to all of you, Board of Health, for your support of everything that we do.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? The Director?
No, thank you.
Any questions?
This item about Group B water systems, what is, like, what's driving that as a priority agenda item? Are systems failing across the state? Are they, are we not doing the type of monitor, quality, water quality monitoring that would be, that would ensure compliance with statewide rules? What is the driving force?
Is this thing working now? Yeah, okay.
What's the gap we're trying to fill?
So Group B is actually an area that I worry about the most. If you're a homeowner and you're the single owner of a well, then you know you have to make sure that the well water is safe for you and your family. Group A are large systems, and the state regulates those. Group B, it falls into the county, but a lot of times, there's only a couple of connections. It's from two connections up to 15 connections.
Yeah.
And individuals who drink water from those wells think that somebody else is taking care of it. They don't realize...
They think they're on a bigger system, but they're not.
Yes. And so there's, you know, when we look at water, we hope it... Yes, and, and so there's, there, you know, when we look at water, we hope it doesn't have too many ingredients. We test for nitrates, we test for bacterial contamination, we test for volatile organic chemicals and inorganic chemicals. Some of those tests are spendy, they're like, you know, $300, $500, and, and so that it, it's, but, it's, it affects commerce, it affects health, and I could talk about this a lot because I, I deal with it in the other county that I work in.
Thurston PUD, don't they deal with some, some number of these Group B systems?
You know, I would...
Oh, I think it's Class A systems.
They don't deal with Class A systems? That's all on...
Did I answer your question a little bit?
Well, I understand the concern, and so I guess the idea is that we want this money to, would come to Thurston County in order to do more testing and more...
Well, the solutions aren't very easy, and I could talk about this a lot, it's just that the, the, sometimes, especially with the economic downturn that happened about 10 years ago, people want to put accessory dwelling units on very small parcels of land. They're, they're drinking from well water, there's supposed to be 100-foot sanitary control area around the well, and things that get into that, into that sanitary control area can seep into the drinking water, like, you know, runoff from roads, pesticides, you know, if you, if you have a crack in the cement of your garage and you're storing toxic chemicals in there, and it's within the 100-foot sanitary control area, then you could, that could seep down into, into the water, the, the well water. So, and with floods, sometimes floodwater comes over the top of the well cap, and then it, it goes down into the well, and you're, so there's this, you know, we, we have to be thoughtful about how, how we deal with Group B systems.
We're happy to provide a follow-up briefing more on Group B and also on the local public health priorities from WASALFO and in consideration of your priorities, as well as our Thurston County Board of Health coming up prior to, prior to this beginning of session.
Perfect, thank you. To all the Black Hills High School students in the audience, I want to thank you for hanging with us for about three hours. Thank you very kindly for your civics class, right? So thank you. Anything for the good of the order, Commissioners?
No. I want to wish Dr. Wood her best of the best.
Oh, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
See you on the 25th.
What?
See you on the 25th.
Right, yes. 25th. Now we're adjourned.